...spend next year on providing care, supporting services for young, elderly and the vulnerable. And last minute savings like this are never an efficient way to actually use the public's money. So I will be shouting very loud and I hope you will agree with me that we take a joint approach right across the council in terms of putting together letter with our district council colleagues. Thank you very much members and very happy to take any questions.
Right. Questions from council, I believe councillor Whittam has got one?
Thank you. Thank you councillor McInnes. Absolutely agree, this is a major concern and something that I think across all parties we would be very deeply concerned about. What I understand is that it's not entirely clear what the picture is at the moment and first priority must be to get to the bottom of that. I therefore ask whether you would encourage all the members in this chamber to do as I have done and speak to their Member of Parliament to elicit their help in trying to find out exactly what the proposals are and how it impacts this county. Would you support us all doing that please?
Councillor Whitten, in fact we will be communicating with our Members of Parliament by the end of tomorrow and we're actually inviting them I think to a nine o'clock meeting a week tomorrow to actually update them on this issue. So I do encourage, as you say, all the members, if you wish to contact your local Member of Parliament, that is really important, but I think also collectively as us as the County Council need to have a meeting with our Devon MPs to make sure they're up to speed and what they can do. Thank you.
Councillor Peterman?
Yeah, thank you James, appreciate the update and thank you for the briefing earlier in the week for group leaders and groups. So yeah, I mean it's going to put us in a tricky position and I think you'll agree with me on top of the £150 million a year that the previous government stripped out of our core grant, everything's gone isn't it? And now when you get something like this, it's going to cost another £13 million, it's really disappointing. So absolutely will be more than happy to sign the letter and I agree with my colleague that absolutely we should get our MPs well briefed and so that they can fight our corner in Westminster. Thank you.
And councillor Lee.
Thank you Chair. I can tell you that the MPs are aware of this and thank you for the briefing the other day that was most helpful. We are taking movements to try to get this clarified and asking all the urgent questions that we can and yes, fully the support from this council to help us do that is extremely useful. So yes, happy to work in partnership to do that.
Thank you very much for that. And could I say I think that the one job that I think we need to do and I think Members of Parliament are actually crucial to this is to actually try and get rid of the myth within central government that somehow it's easier to actually deliver services in rural areas than it is in urban areas. That's what we're hearing from silver servants. And I don't think we can just shout and say we need more money. We actually need to get evidence under the noses of government to make sure that they actually understand that it costs us more money. So thank you very much for your intervention.
Councillor Lee.
Thank you Chair. I mean I think I share with all others in this chamber the concerns about the late the lateness of this announcement and the difficulties that this presents for the staff actually who ideally hope are not going to be working all the way through Christmas. But it is very, very late in the day and I think for me, I'm very happy to be joining with other parties on raising the concerns about this and seeking clarification and a bit more guidance on this. How can we plan without that guidance and certainty? But I think the other thing that I would very much welcome in our response as a council is a recognition that if this money is to be repurposed towards trying to deal with deprivation, that we do have pockets of deprivation in this county. You know, I think the public perception may be that Devon is full of chocolate box, thatched cottage, you know, little villages and they do exist and glorious they are too. However, we do have certainly some wards and some districts where there is considerable and pervasive levels of deprivation, you know, in the top 10 wards of multiple deprivation across the country. So I would be seeking that we ask for clarification about how they are going to identify where, you know, what actually constitutes deprivation and how they're going to make decisions about supporting those most vulnerable people in our most vulnerable communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for mentioning staff because I've been on the County Council nearly 20 years and I don't remember a time when I see senior officers actually pretty stressed about suddenly having to go back to square one in terms of the budget for next year. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the work that they are putting into it. It's very much appreciated and I'm sure you would join with me. But in the cold light of day, we do need to put a case to government and I think you're absolutely right. And we've always had the issue in Devon that we have pockets of deprivation, but on government sitting up here when it looks down, they don't register. And I know the Director of Public Health has done a lot of work in this area and is putting together what sort of total amount in Devon is. If you add up all the bits that are sort of spread about, I think we will have to be even a bit sharper than that in terms of explaining to government that in rural areas... I mean I know myself, I can take you up some farm lanes and some people will be quite shocked how some people live. And the perception is that all farmers are going around in Range Rovers and living the high life and it's not like that in rural areas. So thank you very much for your intervention and... But I think the thing for me also is that we need to encourage government to... They don't seem to understand how they've actually thrown the whole of local government in the air, literally about two and a half months before actually making the decision on the budget. And we need to get across to them, please do not do this again because it's disruptive from everyone's point of view.
Thank you. I've seen no more questions, so thank you very much, Leader at this stage. Item six on the agenda that has urgent attention, I have no item brought forward on that. So item seven is the appointment of members to the CCA, seven and Torbay Combined County Authority. I believe the Whip's have met on this and on the basis of that, there is a recommendation in front with names and deputies. I call upon the Whip to move.
Yeah, thank you very much Chair, and formally move the recommendations A and B in the report in front of you. Thank you.
Chair, if I may second...
I was going to say, can I now call on you to second please councillor Lee.
I'd be very happy to second that, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Any councillor want to speak on this? Councillor Wrigley and councillor Peterman, okay councillor Wrigley first.
Thank you Chair. Couple of things I find peculiar in this and I may have missed something, in which case apologies. I note no indication of term of the appointments in this report and I think it is extremely unfortunate that it doesn't state the term. We don't yet know whether this is for the term of the life of the CCA, for the term of a council. Will this change over in May next year with the elections in this council? It needs to be explicit because if it's not mentioned in the report, then it doesn't actually make it clear in any way, sense at all. So reading the report, the term is certainly vitally important.
Councillor Peterman?
Sorry. I'm also a little concerned about the amount of funds that are being spent on this. We know that local council reorganisation is being discussed by the government, we know that we are expecting a white paper shortly and we know that this arrangement is unlikely to be permanent, it may not even see the light of day. So we may not be appointing people to an organisation that will ever actually exist if things move as fast as they possibly might do. So I think we need to be very aware that this is a changing feast and we must be very careful on not spending lots of money on something that is changing at the rate that it is changing, certainly given the financial constraints on this council. Thank you.
Thank you. No councillor Peterman?
Thank you Chair, I mean obviously I did bring this up at the Chair's briefing this morning, I think he's only right I do now. I'm really disappointed that the independent and Green Group won't have a place on the scrutiny committee of this committee. You know, it's hardly devolution, it's actually taking power away from our communities, it's pushing it all away and especially for an area like mine in North Devon, we feel completely and utterly isolated from it and will have no or little say at all. And I fully accept the reasons why we haven't got a place, you know, the reality is that Devon gets five places and Torbay, which effectively is no different to Teen Bridge District Council or North Devon District Council, have also got five places and it's why for me it's a pretty poor deal and as my colleague before, I think it'll just cost an awful lot of money to administer. And the reality is, as we move along, a bit like the Police Crime Commissioner's Office, the cost of running it will go up and up and up and the amount of money or police officers we see on the street will go down and down and down. So it's disappointing, I realise to get us a place would probably mean having about 40 or 50 people on the committee, but you know, I just think it's wholly disappointing. And I'll finish with a question, I would be interested to know if any of the councillors appointed to any of these positions will be getting a special responsibility allowance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McInnes?
A few questions in there, I'll leave the county solicitor to ask the one about councillor Wrigley, that actually what needs to be there, but in terms of the combined authority itself, firstly, cost. We've actually been given, I think it's a million pounds over a period to actually implement this, we're not using a fraction of that. The actual number of staff that's actually going to be employed by the combined authority is going to be very small because most of the work is going to be done in Devon County Council and Torbay area. No members will be receiving an allowance, it will be on top of their day job. And I think we have to face the fact that instruments went before Parliament last week and unless there's a major revolt within the government on Devon and Torbay combined authority, it will go into law and we will come to being in about the first of February 2025. And we have to today face what's in front of us now. And what councillor Wrigley said about the possibility of what might come out of the white paper is absolutely true, but even what comes out of the white paper will still take a number of years to actually be implemented. And I do not believe the government would have actually said to Devon and Torbay, "We agree your devolution deal" and then at the end of January or early 2025 say it's no longer to be there. I don't believe that, I think that's wrong. So we're going with a process and my last comment is that a lot of this is just all being said previously, but from my perspective, the fact that we've got a Devon and Torbay combined authority deal means that we're in the game. We may still only be the little egg on the edge of the table and things may morph into something a lot bigger going forward, but at least we're in the game where there's lots of areas across the country that haven't got combined authority status and are not in the game. So that's our advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sillister?
Thank you Chair. Just to clarify on term, you're quite right, the term will only be until May and we will clarify that in the recommendation to ensure that that changes. So far as the term, we will treat it as an outside body, so that will be a matter for the CCA which would be dealt with at their annual AGM. And just coming back on allowances, again, that's a matter for the CCA, it's captured I think in the final section of the report, but allowances are a matter for the CCA, this council will not be paying any allowances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll move on to item eight on the agenda, which is petitions, questions and representatives from the public. Sorry? I've been told we need to vote. Stuart's proposed, Caroline's... Everybody in favour please show. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Clearly carried, thank you very much. Now I'll move to item eight, petitions, questions, representations from the general public. Before we start this public session, I would like to remind those attending and speaking today that comments, questions and representation should be factual, statements should not include any personal comments or details of other individuals, including names. It also goes without saying that statements should not contain any offensive language or vexatious comments. If inappropriate comments are made, I will ask the speaker to stop. Now can we continue? At this point, I remind the council that the total time permitted for this agenda item is 30 minutes. Now, if I can just look across the count, do we have a petition, Karen, from Matt Redmond? I was led to believe he might not be here. We have no petition I think from Matt Redmond in relation to improvements of road safety at St Marychurch Road, Newton Abbey. Okay. I'll move to the next one, which is, there is a second petition due to be put in today from Jane King, additional paper petition, supporting online petition which has got 2,000, no 1,500 signatures, divestment of companies selling weapons to Israel. Now are you here Jane King?
Yes I am.
Right, thank you. There's a microphone for you, please present your petition and I invite you to say a few words. Have you got your petition now?
Yes I have.
Right.
This is the subject of complete divestment from companies selling arms to Israel. We, the undersigned, command Devon County Council to withdraw over £2 million in investments from companies selling arms to Israel. We demand immediate withdrawal of these investments, particularly in light of the tragic loss of over 20,000 children in Gaza. Our pension fund should not support activities contributing to such atrocities. We urge Devon County Council to fully divest from these companies, to uphold the values of peace, justice and ethical responsibility. Shall I carry on speaking? Okay, so I wanted just to give a few more details on this. I imagine most people know the horror of what's being happening in Gaza that Israel is using, has continually been bombing for over a year now. According to Save the Children, November 25th, 130 children under 10 have been deprived of food. And since October the 6th this year, the northern of Gaza has been declared a closed military zone by Israel and there are tens of thousands of people there without food and without medical medicines. Forty-four percent of those killed by the Israeli military have been children between five and nine years of age. They're killed by bombs, rockets, bullets and there is no safe space. The war on Gaza, according to the Regional Director of Save the Children, the war on Gaza is a war on children. Approximately 128,000 children under 10 years of age in northern Gaza have been killed and approximately 17,000 children have been orphaned and I think everyone who's a parent or a grandparent here will know what it means to a child to lose their parents, their grandparents and all their family. So I am asking and we are asking that this council considers withdrawing all investments in such weapons of war and all support for the state of Israel which has been continuing to withhold not only food, aid, but also medicines and any other kind of help to people still remaining in Gaza alive. Thank you.
Thank you Jane King. There is an item coming up shortly on this, a question from a councillor which will get answered. Are there any other petitions? I've not been notified of any, in which case we have five questions and I will ask people again, you will all have had a reply to your question, you have the right for a supplementary but it needs to be pertaining to the question and the answer. Jackie, thank you very much. So on the basis of that, the first question is from Kim Sturgis and councillor Hughes has given a written reply, so is Kim Sturgis there? Do you have a supplementary? Do we have Kim Sturgis in the room? Okay. The second question is from Cathy Mudge and councillor Ledbetter has given a reply. You obviously do have a supplementary question, fine. Okay.
Cathy Mudge, child safeguarding. Councillor Ledbetter here today?
Sorry?
Councillor Ledbetter here today?
Yes, he's here.
Right, can he put his hand up?
Will you stand up councillor Ledbetter so she can see you're here?
You answered that you will not consider the CAS report. I sent this report because it stated the importance of what goes on in schools cannot be underestimated. The transitioning of children does not start in hospital, it starts in schools. I have researched the situation in all schools in Devon, published in The Telegraph, I have seen the male teachers in dresses, organisations grooming children to believe in this ideology in lunchtime, LGBTQ groups, I've read the policies in schools where breast binders and packers are enabled. I have met parents devastated by this. Mixed sex facilities encouraged...
A point of order Mister Chairman, does this not, this type of representation stoking up prejudice, is this not in breach of the council's code of conduct?
There is no prejudice in talking about the rights of children.
You are intent to one supplementary question?
And I'm asking my question and I have three minutes to ask my question.
No, you have a question.
I have the question now.
Right. Just a question please.
Could I have the name of the person who stood up and said I was being prejudiced?
Mister Chairman, I'm councillor Rob Hannaford and I'm not going to sit here and listen to your...
Sorry, what's your name again?
Your transphobia in this chamber unchallenged madam.
Sorry, what's your name again?
Stop.
Rob Hannaford.
Hold in, I'm the chairman here, sit down Rob, lady, ma'am, you finish your question by your means.
Okay. Mixed sex facilities encouraged leading to sexual assaults, children are being disciplined for misgendering other pupils.
Where is your question?
If you are denying the council has any responsibility for the things I have seen happened in schools, councillor Ledbetter...
Right.
When we can't raise our hands or we try to speak to you next.
You have, you have the right to a question, a supplementary question, not to make a speech in this. Thank you. Councillor Ledbetter, is there anything you feel you should answer in relation to that question?
Do I not say councillor and myself?
Microphone.
Could you turn around a little bit because my mic's off?
No, not lit up? Give me another mic. Have you shut them all, have you punished us? We may shut them all down. Oh, okay. Okay.
Sorry. You're going to have to say that again. Okay. Chairman, I didn't hear a specific question, all I would like to say is that safeguarding is everyone's concern and this council and myself, we take it very, very seriously.
Thank you very much. I now have question three from Jenny Dingsdale and it's on the similar line, can I please have a question, not a statement?
Is it working now? Am I allowed to give context to my question or not?
You can raise a supplementary question in relation to your question and the answers you have been given.
Yeah, I feel like my original question councillor Ledbetter doesn't seem to have understood or accepted the points I was trying to make to him, so I just want to emphasise. Last week, a case was heard in the Supreme Court to decide what woman is, whichever way the judges rule, this is a huge step to the inevitable repeal of the GRA because it is a law...
Technically that is not a question, that's a statement.
Can you just let me finish please? It's a law which provides illegal fiction and it really does obliterate safeguarding. Humans cannot change sex, males have a different reproductive role to females, so they have different sexual behaviours and safeguarding needs.
This is not the object of today's session here. Can we turn the mic off again please?
I'm going to ask my question. I'm not going to have this snatch off of me, I am going to ask my question.
Look councillor Ledbetter, I don't think it was a question there either, but any comment you want to add?
Sadistic, predatory men are abusing children.
I'm sorry. This is not the format for that kind of question in relation to the question you have already submitted and you had an answer to it. Please will you sit down?
You're not, Chairman, through you, the speakers are not going to help their cause by saying what they're saying, okay?
Yeah.
You're not having a meaningful conversation with us. I've already said, I've already said we take safeguarding very, very seriously in this council, I take safeguarding very seriously, all the councils take it very, very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming up to conclusions.
On a point of order, on a point of order, the lady in the black made a statement 30 seconds ago which I'm sure has been recorded, she said she had been assaulted, that was the word she used madam, is that not right? Bear in mind it's being recorded, did you say you've been assaulted? Did you say you had been assaulted?
James?
Well Chairman, you can't have public saying they're assaulted by our staff.
James, sit down.
You cannot accept that.
Sit down. Now look, I'm going to move on to question four. This, this meeting is getting slightly out of hand. I'm going to pull it back now to question four, which is David Chappell, are you in attendance?
Yes I am.
Right, do you have a supplementary question as against the statement?
Yes I do.
Thank you.
Is that working? Thank you Chair, and I do want to thank Jackie Hodgson, councillor Jackie Hodgson for raising this issue in the first place, councillor James Morish for agreeing to meet myself and two other local campaigners to discuss... to discuss this important issue before the Investment and Pension Fund Committee on the second. I want to thank the Investment and Pension Fund Committee for giving time to discuss this issue, which some people think is controversial, but it's to me straightforward. And I also want to thank the local campaigner who has produced a discussion document that I would urge all councillors to read, who's gone into the issue into forensic detail in some places, but is showing some of the investment flows that we don't think Devon councillors were even aware of in relation to this issue. And some of the misinformation errors and anomalies that may have informed some of the discussion that you've been able to have around this issue. So that's really important because what we're saying is we think some of the things that are happening in relation to investments...
Can I ask for a question?
Yes, so I just wanted to get the appreciation out of the way. There is a question, but can I, can I read the original question for people who are not here, who are online? No? Okay, so thank you very much, councillor Morish, for the reply to my question, which I only received late this morning. And I'm encouraged by the comment in it, especially that the discussions that will now take place with Brunel and other members of the Brunel pool will involve discussing with them the potential to widen the exclusion policy. And that is obviously what we want to happen. Will councillor Morish and the Pension Fund Committee or the council as a whole give a commitment to engage us, these are the local campaigners, in the discussion of that issue?
Chair.
Councillor Morish.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, thank you for your question. The Brunel meeting is actually happening today. But I'm here to answer your question and to be part of this council. We meet again on a regular basis. We will, as I said to you when we met in Crediton, I personally give you that commitment. We will liaise with you through the appropriate ways. We will listen to you as we have done so far, as you've admitted. And we thank you for your guidance and your advice, which has helped us as a committee. Thanks, chairman.
Thank you. Question five is from Neil Martin. In relation to floating bus stops, and you've had a reply from Mr Hughes. Do you have a supplementary question, sir?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes for your clear response. Would you now provide recorded evidence that the RNIB actually approved floating bus stops and the use of the trapezial curbs in that meeting in May? Because the RNIB representative that attended states he did not support floating bus stops. And neither did the Guide Dog Association and many other charities. In fact, under the Freedom of Information Act to this council, DCC stated they had no notes from any such meeting, surprising for such an important design decision on a 1.7 million pound project. So therefore, we ask again, please provide evidence that the RNIB supported the use of floating bus stops and the approach to the inclusive design, and it's not just a tick box exercise sent to Hattock Devon County agendas. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Martin, and I'll be quite happy to look into that for you. And as you will see in my reply, I did say that we have a further meeting. It's going to be arranged with a visually impaired representatives once the scheme is completed, and that will happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is petitions from councillors. Do I have any councillors with a petition? I haven't been informed of one. Okay, thank you. Question, item ten on the agenda is questions from members of council. And again with this, can we have supplementary questions rather than statements? And question one is from councillor Hawkins about warfleet road closure. You've had a reply from councillor Hughes. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, chairman. Oh, gosh, that's a bit loud, isn't it? Yes, I do have a supplementary. Can I thank councillor Hughes very much for his reply? I do want to emphasise, and hopefully you'll give me a few minutes to do that. This section of Dartmouth is cut off and a detour of roughly six miles is required by residents and tourists to actually access Dartmouth Castle and that part of the town at the present moment. I thank him for that, but I have been told for the last six months by officers that this is illegal and it's in conversations with the landowners, et cetera. I see that you are proposing to take enforcement out. Can I actually have a date of when that work will start taking place? Because to just keep on saying it's illegal isn't doing me any good, isn't doing the residents of Dartmouth any good, or our tourists. Thank you.
All I can say there, chairman, I shall get councillor Hawkins a written reply and try to bring him up to date with what exactly is happening.
Be in touch. Question two is from councillor Connet, reference broadband cuts impact on ex-minister John Holden. Again, you've had a response from councillor Gilbert. Do you have a supplementary? No supplementary, thank you. Councillor Dewhurst, you are retaining wall on the A379 Torquay Road at Sholden. Again, you've had a reply and you have a supplementary.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I thank councillor Hughes for his reply. And I am very, in some way gratified to see that I'm not the only councillor in our county with a similar problem. And I see the first question to councillor Hawkins was over a very similar issue. So as far as I can see, councillor Hughes is saying that officers believe that the wall is in private ownership. But all the correspondence I have seen that has come from this council to the landowner of the land adjacent to the wall says that the officers think that the wall is not in the county's ownership, but there has been no evidence. I'd like to invite councillor Hughes and an officer along to look at the wall with me and discuss the matter. But my residents are up in arms about this, as is councillor Hawkins with his residents. It's a massive problem in the centre of a community and causing untold harm. And nobody can see any movement from the council. So my question is, will councillor Hughes come and see the wall with me? And can somebody provide some evidence that actually the wall does not belong to Devon County other than the fact that people think it doesn't? Thank you.
Shall we only two please to go down to Sheldon and have a look at the wall with councillor Dewhurst and an officer as well?
I have read your email councillor Crowe.
Evitate this for brevity, perhaps councillor Hughes would like to come and look at Marlborough Road when he's finished with councillor Dewhurst. Thank you, lovely.
The email that's going right is councillor Crowe's having difficulty hearing people. A number of people on it is vibrating. Can we just try and experiment? Councillor Adams, do you have a supplementary? And if so, sit there and speak, and let's see if it comes out any clearer.
Did you, did you say to sit? No.
Sit down and talk into the microphone, sitting down, and let's see if that comes over any clearer.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sit, Tracy. Okay, thank you councillor Hughes, very short answer, I appreciate it short. I just wondered, are there any more strategic plans considering Democratic council's ambitions for net zero and active travel for more school streets in Devon? Five is not very many, and I know in my division people are crying out for improvements outside their schools and school streets would be a really positive way forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for that councillor Adams, because I'm sure that we will have some more coming on stream. I presume you know where the, they are, the five I've mentioned, Bobby Tracy, Blue Coats at Great Torrington, Bradley Barton in Newton Abbott, Lady Smith in Exeter, and Whitton Barton in Exeter. They're the five. I can let you have that list anyway. Thank you.
Lady Smith didn't work, just point of reference, so we're down to four.
Can I ask councillors, did you hear that question and answer better while he was sitting as against standing? Most people, those with hearing aids are having some difficulty, but I think it is more directional. So let's go through, we're seated this time for a minute. Councillor, five is from councillor Lever, reassurance on community safety. Would you just...
Thank you very much, Chair. I'd like to start by thanking councillor Crowe for his response and for setting out in so much detail the important work that the Police and Crime Panel, on which we both serve, do across Devon and Cornwall. I think we're all sure, I'm sure that we're all thankful that Devon remains one of the safest places in the country to live. And I'd like to thank all of those who work within the police force and that work so hard to keep the people of Devon safe and to keep crime rates low. I'd also just like to take this opportunity to thank all those involved in supporting victims of crime and in the prevention of crime. And I think we can all agree that we are in their debt. I think in relation to the question that I have asked, we all will have seen in the press in the last week or so that the Police and Crime Commissioner suspended the acting chief constable Jim Colwell last week following allegations of a breach of professional standards. Now, he was appointed by Alison Hernandez, the Police and Crime Commissioner for Devon and Cornwall in July 2023, following the suspension of the newly appointed chief constable after allegations of sexual assault were made against him, that he didn't even get to start his job.
Do you have a question?
Okay, right, okay, we're getting to the question. So given that he didn't even manage to start his job before he was suspended, and now we have the second one suspended, and we've, you know, would it be reasonable to say that there is a pattern of poor decision making on behalf of the Crime and Police and Crime Commissioner? And isn't it time now for her to resign?
Councillor Crowe? No. Thank you. Question six is councillor Dewhurst, recycling and carbon intensive products. You've had a written answer, do you have a supplementary?
I do, please, Chair. Thank you. So thanks to councillor Crowe for his comprehensive reply. It is very gratefully received. And I do understand the background to this. So my question is, will he in fact write to the Secretary of State? Because I believe it is in all our interests, we are in a climate emergency after all, that we take individual responsibility for what we do in terms of this climate emergency. And local, local volunteering of all descriptions helps our society and the authorities that help to run our society. And having local waste collection organisations of whatever nature, we need to be supporting that. And so would he write to the Secretary of State, please, to encourage him or her to help local village style, local recycling? Thank you.
Councillor Crowe?
Thank you, chairman. I quite agree with the sentiments of councillor Dewhurst. But there isn't a lot of laws coming through, certainly up to next April, when the extender producer responsibility for packaging is coming out. And we want to see what that consists of before I even think about writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Question seven is from councillor Adams, schools and 20 mile an hour zones.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much for this response, councillor Hughes. It sort of carries on really from the previous question. So looking at the data, it's only about a third of schools, it seems here, they've got 20 mile an hour zones in front of them, in front of the school. So is, my supplementary question really is, is this a strategic priority? And is assessment being made of whether 20 mile an hour zones can be put in front of more schools? I also would say, I'm not sure the statements at the end about new developments are designed to keep traffic 20 mile an hour. There's a lot of new developments in my division, and they're not all designed to keep to 20 mile an hour. And I think there is a message that needs to go out, not just in understanding.
Yeah, thanks very much councillor Adams. I'll get your written reply on that one. Okay.
Question eight is from councillor Connet, reference to judgment on the Lower Hill Farm. Do you have a question? Thank you very much. Question nine is councillor Dewhurst on payment to AP providers. Do you have a supplementary? No. Question 10 is again an issue of the planning application for Lower Hill Farm, councillor Connet. Do you have a supplementary? No, thank you very much indeed. With that now, I move to item 10 and item 11, which is the Team Devon Joint Committee. And the leader of the council, I move, essentially the chair of cabinet, so that's the leader of the council, come to the well, will you please? Yes, it seems to be less people pulling faces at me while you're sitting than when you're standing. You can't. Okay. I can't control the lights unless anybody else can. They're as high as they can be because we have reduced lighting to save the electricity, aren't they? Can I ask the leader of the council, please, to introduce this about the Team Devon Joint Committee?
Thank you very much, chairman. You'll remember, members, that in April, May, we agreed to have a strategic committee of Team Devon, a strategy committee of the council. Today is about setting out who will be on that committee as far as the county council is concerned. You can see the recommendation is the leader and the deputy leader. And at the bottom there, you can see that the areas that initially Team Devon will cover. There has been one amendment in terms of, A, I was with district leaders and chief executives yesterday, and we agreed that there still needs to be a little bit of work done in terms of all the monitoring officers in the district councils agreeing on the set of rules and guidance, et cetera, that's further in this paper. So we've put in the words and give delegated authority to the Director of Legal Democratic Services to make minor amendments there too. I think Team Devon is a really important place going forward. We've already had local government review possibly going on, but I think we really need to prove in Devon that we, the districts and the county council, are working closely together. We have informally, this is making it into a more formal arrangement, which I think is really important for two reasons. Firstly, that the Team Devon can actually have a view on some of the issues that come up to the combined authority. But I think more important than that, to make sure that Team Devon, as in the district councils and the county council, can actually sit around the table in a formal way and actually address working closer together. Because whatever comes forward in terms of local government review, we are going to have to show to government that here in Devon, we are working together. And that's really important. So I fully propose the recommendations with the amendments, and could I have a second, please?
Thank you very much. This is a recommendation that went through cabinet. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Davis?
I'm not very happy to second.
Okay, fine. Any other councillor want to speak on this, right? Councillor Dewhurst?
Thank you, Chair. So in a previous time, when I was at another council, as well as this council, there were occasions when my colleague to my right, councillor Connet, delegated to me to join Team Devon. And I completely agree, it is really, really important that everybody talks together. Unless we jaw jaw, we'll wall wall. So it is absolutely important. However, I'm... However, in terms of transparency, where are we going to put the minutes of these meetings? Where are they going to be sort of headlined, as it were, so that the public, that we as councillors, as district councillors, know that these meetings take place and what is discussed there? Thank you.
As I understand it, this is a strategy committee of the county council, so the county council, this committee will be advertised in the same way as any, like the planning committee is or scrutiny is, and the minutes, they'll be in a public place and probably have cameras actually rolling while the meeting's taking place, and minutes will be taken, and those minutes will be in the public domain.
Councillor Hodgson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, two things. One is the final bullet point before it says number five, administering authority, where it says advise, inform and support the work of any, the Devon and Torbay Combined County Authority. I wonder if that's actually maybe a bit of a distortion? I mean, surely the role is to actually be looking down and be that link down rather than up, and I feel that kind of says we're going to do as we're told, so I just wonder if that could be a bit clarified. But secondly, it's all very well, with all due respect, moving deck chairs round, having more meetings, but at the end of the day, the biggest deficit here is about the money we have to spend on anything meaningful that we want to invest in. And I know, and this is obviously going to cost money, so therefore, for me, it has to be worthwhile. Boris Johnson, a few years ago, wrote to the Investment Fund Committee and asked them to consider investing in local projects, and by that he meant things happening probably at Devon level, not at, you know, Totnes level. And I just wonder if that's something that could be considered in terms of looking to have bids, where actually our own pension funds, which often, as you know, come under my BDI, could actually be bidding to, to actually do something for what we need here and to help us with our crises, rather than, as you would probably expect me to say, creating crises elsewhere. So has that been something that would be considered? Because, you know, we can have as many good thinkers as we like in a room together, but if they haven't got any money to spend, we might as well be whistling in the wind.
Thank you very much, councillor Hodgson. I don't know if the county solicitor could, the first point, because I don't think I can. Yeah, can you clarify, because the sound is so peculiar in here, I'm finding it difficult to actually...
Clarify what? The whole lot?
Your first point.
Oh, the thing about investment. No, no, about, oh, sorry, yes.
You made a reference to...
Yeah, it's the final point, just before it says point five administering authority on page 12. The bullet point before that says advise, inform and support the work of any, this is actually not a very good sentence, any of the Devon and Torbay Combined Authority, county authority. So in other words, it's, you know, we're going to potentially do, the Team Devon is going to be instructed, because I mean, we're giving a commitment there, which is maybe a little bit of a snookering ourselves. Team Devon, as my view, should be really free to have come up with their own thoughts.
I think you're reading it completely the wrong way around. That is saying that Team Devon, as in the district councils and the county council, can discuss issues that are going to come to the combined authority and come to a joint view? So actually, it's actually bringing people together to have a joint view, not telling them what they should think. It's the complete opposite to what you, how you've read it.
I think your suggestion misunderstood me, but it doesn't matter.
And your second point, which, I'm sorry, there's all the different noises in here, it's great. And also, I'm sitting down, my brain doesn't work when I'm sat down usually. I think in terms of Team Devon, it's really important that we actually do make decisions, and I think councillor Hodgson's point is, you know, is we don't just want another talking shop. We've been talking informally in Team Devon since before the pandemic, and it worked very well through the pandemic and has since. And I think it's very clear to all of us that have been in local government, like yourself, for some time, there's going to be change, and what we need to show in Devon is that the district councils and the county councils can actually think sort of strategically together about how we can actually modernise and change services that will actually help us actually deliver a better service to residents across Devon. So that work would go in on in the county council and in the respective district councils, but Team Devon is a place where you can come together and discuss how that's going to happen. And to me, that's really important, that's almost more important than the combined authority discussion. Because if we don't get our act together, then government is just going to say there are no districts and there's no county council. You will have a unitary authority. So it's really important that we work together.
Can I just have a quick reply? Is that okay?
Can I just ask the councillor to give you a technical...
Thank you, Chair. Just to come back on the point around costs, we already hold a Team Devon meeting, so this is just formalising that into a formal committee, there's no additional costs. Yes, we'll host it, yes, we'll publish in the minutes. I think you picked up on the costs of the committee, there won't be any additionals, because we already hold that meeting and host it anyway.
Councillor Beadleman, you want to come there?
Well, I don't really, I mean, it's more about the conditions, Chair. It's, you know, I mean, councillor Hodgson's trying to talk, people can't hear her, we can't read our papers, it's too dark. You know, it's a bit embarrassing, to be honest. I think we do need to look at this. Sorry? But, yeah, I mean, it is a genuine struggle for us to read our papers and hear the debate.
Anybody else got any questions? If not, you proposed your second. Can I have a vote, please? Those in favour, what's in front of you? Thank you. Those against, what's in front of us? Those abstaining? Thank you. Okay. Right, it is well carried, thank you very much. Item 12 on the agenda, a cabinet member's report. A cabinet member is going to give you a report. Questions can come in relation to the cabinet member's report, but it's not a wide-open questions-and-answers session. First cabinet member to come forward is councillor Gilbert. You got your hand up. Do you wish to come in, councillor? Your microphone's not working. Somebody, there it is.
Oh, that side is. I don't know whether now's the right time to ask a question about the cabinet report? Or is he giving one first?
After it's been presented.
Are you there?
Yeah, you're live.
Yeah, okay. I've got nothing to say. You had the report in front of you. Thank you.
Right. Councillor Bailey goes first for the question. And then councillor Connet. This room for me.
Thank you for your report, councillor. There's a lot of comments about supporting schools. I wondered what the cabinet member's view is on the 2025/26 revenue funding arrangements for schools, which contains a proposed fine for schools when they exclude a pupil. Has he had sight of this? Is he aware of this? I believe many councillors are not aware of it. I think it's a really, really terrible idea, which will basically tie the hands of our head teachers in order to provide funding for Devon County Council. It'll tie their hands, they won't be able to exercise their judgement. And I'm quite surprised, as councillors, that we haven't been advised of this, and I wondered, is the portfolio holder aware of it? It talks about accelerating our approach to inclusion, but actually, I think that it will do completely the opposite, and I'd like to have the portfolio's views, portfolio holders' views on it, please.
I'm sorry to disappoint you, but it is not my brief. You've got the wrong portfolio holder. Thank you.
Can I say, I said at the very beginning, questions on the report are circulated by the cabinet member. That was not in the cabinet member's report. You have an opportunity, a week before this meeting, to put a question down for the relevant cabinet member, or you've got the chance to put a question down for the cabinet next week. But that is not what this concept was now. I'll go next to councillor Connet.
Thank you, Chairman. It's difficult to know what this concept's about, because three reports seem to be written by the press office, who do so much for the cabinet members. My question is related to page 21, economic infrastructure, where the cabinet member comments on the St Mobbin's exit from Sky Park Development, and then talks about the local development order. As I recall, that was a part two paper to the cabinet, which was not available to all councillors to read. So could he explain exactly what it is that St Mobbin's have exited from, what the priorities are, what the council's doing, what the timeframe is, and to expand in much more detail on the economic infrastructure and what he's doing now that St Mobbin's have exited Sky Park? What's this about? As he's put it in part one, tell us everything there is to know.
Okay, so a response to that, the press office has absolutely nothing whatsoever to do with my report. And secondly, for reasons of confidentiality, we will give you a written report to your second question. Thank you.
Chairman, it very clearly is something to do with this cabinet report. I expect a member to come here briefed, he's placed this in part one, I've asked him about it in part one, why is he now refusing to ask? Do you have any control? A cabinet member's coming here to be, you know, just saying nothing at all, not answer questions.
Councillor Connet, thank you. It is in your report on page 21. Could you give some more information, please? Or would you give a written report to the councillor in question? But it is in your report, so it is a fair question.
Yeah, and as I've just said, for reasons of confidentiality, and for not wishing to in any way break the conditions of confidentiality, I'm somewhat nervous of doing so, and consequently, I would like to sit down and make sure that you get a detailed and full reply to that question, which you deserve to have, and you will get it.
I'll go now to councillor Dewhurst, I think. My list was there.
Thank you, Chair. So councillor Codit has sort of somewhat stolen my thunder on that one, but don't worry, I agree with him. I found this report very difficult, because it doesn't actually sort of say anything particular. So could the cabinet member, please, on page 21, under the section Training and Skills, tell us about the positive about care experience programme, and how the council might develop that across the whole council area, as opposed to just the Exeter area, please? And it's great to see that 120 young people have been helped into an internship, but I'm thinking about heavily populated places like Teibritt and Southhames, as well as, of course, North Devon and the like.
Thank you, councillor Dewhurst. We are looking to extend that in less than lessons learned, so we totally agree. We will be rolling it out further. It is a success, we've been working hard at it, and I'm pleased to say things are going very well, and because of that, it is our intention to roll it out further.
And what sort of time span, please, read for us?
Making sure I get the answer right. It hasn't been decided, oh dear, this sounds awfully ambiguous, to be decided, and I'm sorry about that, but it hasn't been decided. I genuinely mean that, it hasn't, I'm sorry. But it's a perfectly reasonable question, and if I can give you a proper answer to it, which I don't have to hand, I certainly will do. But I agree with the question, and I'm sorry, I can't give you an answer to that. But it is a success, it's working well, and we're pleased. So that is, that's good news, and because of that, because of that, we will be rolling it out further. Thank you.
Councillor Hughes.
Thank you, Chair. I am really pleased, thank you, to see that the food justice motion that I brought to council has resulted in Devon's Good Food Strategy, 2023 to 28, that was really good, thank you, being put in place. How are the food stakeholders collaborating so that good quality, locally grown food can be sold at affordable prices for those on low income to be able to afford it? As part of that motion, we wanted to reduce, I wanted to reduce, and so did the council, the number of food banks that we have. Thank you.
It is, I think you might be referring to food banks? Are you, in particular? Is it particularly relevant to food banks, the question?
No, the question is more to do with the way, going forward from your, from the Good Food Strategy, that the stakeholders who are collaborating on providing food, that they can provide good quality, locally grown food sold at affordable prices, being part of that discussion, because that was such an important part of the Good Food Strategy, from the original motion. Thank you.
Well, it is part of the food strategy to do so, so I'm not still struggling with the question.
I suppose I'm asking you if you're aware that the stakeholders involved are discussing this and dealing with it and going forward in order to reach that point where they are providing food that's good quality, hence more healthy local people, you know, so that they're not struggling to buy food. I just feel it's an important point for you to keep an eye on.
Yes, and I totally agree with it. So the answer is, which I've checked up to my left with Mrs Denton, that the answer is yes. And what's more, I fully, fully, fully support it in every way. So I'm right with you, and the answer is yes.
Thank you, because I know...
And I'm sorry, it took a little long to get there.
No, that's okay, but I know from across Devon, the numbers going to food banks are increasing.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Lever, next.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report, councillor Gilbert. I think as I went through this, I heard all sorts of different questions, but as other people are asking specific questions, I'm just going to focus down particularly on the partnerships section on page 20. The second paragraph of that refers to the Prosper Programme, which has been delivered in Exeter East and Mid Devon, and then at the bottom of that page, we've got the growth hub that continues to provide a free support and referral service for businesses in Devon, and so on and so forth. And I suppose my question is that, as was suggested by councillor Dewhurst, this gives us some top-line good news, this is something that's happening, isn't that fabulous? But what it doesn't tell us is anything about targets for achievement, how many businesses have been advised, what different sectors they have come from. I mean, with the shared prosperity, the Prosper Programme, are there any prospects for that to be delivered in other parts of the county or something similar? There is, and I just wondered whether you could tell us a bit about, well, actually give us some reassurance and some information about, actually, what are the hard facts around these, rather than just a general statement?
First of all, I can reassure you that it is a lot, and a lot is going on, a lot has been done and will continue to be done. And note when I say a lot, because of that, I think you should have a full written detailed response to it, to reassure you, to reassure you that what I've just said is correct.
I think I'd be grateful for that, as indeed I think we would on all sorts of different things in this report. Thank you.
Councillor Brazil.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to ask some questions about connecting Devon and Somerset. I always find it rather frustrating when we put in reports that we've actually delivered some percentage high in 90s. I mean, the truth of the matter is, is airband have failed to deliver less than half of what they were meant to deliver. I'd call it an abject failure. No one seems to be taking responsibility for it. I've got lots of communities in my area that were not allowed to use the voucher scheme because they were told that they were going to be connected in this scheme here, and then, lo and behold, they've suddenly pulled out and they're not doing it after all. I think we deserve better. It's public money being spent to deliver something that hasn't anywhere near delivered what it should have done, and I think we're letting airband off far too lightly here. what it should have done, and I think we're letting Airband off far too lightly here. I see that, see that from the scrutiny committee that there are going to be one-to-one briefings for members. I'd like to know when those may be. And also, that can someone get a grip on these contracts? Because they seem to be running totally, they're just, what they're, all they're doing is connecting people that have already been connected because they can make money out of them and failing to do what they should be doing, which is connecting the hard-to-reach rural settlements that we have in Devon and particularly many in my division.
Yeah, so first of all, I can reassure you that no public money has been wasted because the payments are retrospective, so the contractors are only paid on results, there is no advance payment, so there's no public funds wasted. Second of all, whilst it may not appear so, it is considered across the United Kingdom that CDS is one of the success stories of the rollout of superfast broadband to the areas. And whilst you and I and I and I, that my division is badly affected, just like yours, I'm not an exception, there are alternatives, the voucher system is available, and as it is said in my letter to all members, we are happy to have one-to-one meetings, it's been offered, you simply have to ask, and I note you haven't asked, and I have responded to some of, to one of your communities, and indeed that community, as I understand it, yesterday was and has been offered a one-to-one meeting to clear up any misunderstandings. Second of all, just like any other contractor anywhere else in business, we cannot control the banks and financiers of contractors. That is not peculiar to this rollout programme. The banks and financiers are a private matter between the contractors and deliverers themselves. In the event that there's a default or a debtless council, we have no control over that, and I'm sure you would be aware of that. There's nothing we can do, it's just bad luck that we ended up with a contractor and they were fully scrutinised, they were fully checked out before they got the contract. Nothing could be more disappointed than to come forward to areas that where they are end up just disappointed, and my division, as I've just said, is one, is no exception, and we are genuinely, genuinely sorry. It is not, it is not in any way a reflection on CDS or us. We have mitigated the situation considerably to improve it on where it was even two months ago. A lot of time has been spent negotiating to retrieve a lot of the contract and mitigate circumstances. That's all I can say, and I'm sorry, but this, that's just the way business sometimes goes.
Councillor Atkinson.
I'm just going to ask for some clarification on the economic infrastructure report, which I must say I don't quite understand. It says that 1.8 million pounds from the Green Impact Fund led by the County Council, oh my things gone off. Is that part of the combined authority settlement of 16 million, or is that something else? And the, as I understand it from our website, the application, the time for applying finished on the 29th of November. So can you tell us what kind of projects have in fact submitted applications for those? And just to clarify, this 16 million capital grant programme, what is that again? Is it our 16 million for the combined authority, or is it something else? If it's something else, whose 16 million is it, and are we only getting 1.8 million?
I can, the 1.8 is part of the contract, and there have been 108 applications, of which I cannot recall all 188 sitting here off the top of my head, but if you needed to know all 108, I'm sure we can provide the answer to that, but there isn't time today. Thank you.
Rufus.
Hi, my name is-
You were asked about the 16, that is separate and that is cash.
I thought I'd answered, the 1.8 is part of the 16? Or are we misunderstanding your question?
And is that 16 million, the combined authority 16 million that we're getting?
It's awarded to Devon and Torbay.
Okay, right, so it is part of that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I've seen no other councillor, sorry, Jackie, Jackie. Councillor Hodgson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I want to also talk about partnerships, and just one of the big partnerships that we're involved in, which isn't listed, but I'd be very interested to learn a little bit about it, is the South Devon Freeport, because this week we've heard the Princess Jap Luxury Yachts, which is, whilst one of the flagship industries going in there, is about to drop 200 jobs as far as I understand it, and are talking about needing deregulation in order to survive. And I'm just wondering, do we actually monitor what's going on in the Freeport, given that we made a 15 million plus investment there? And I think we've done that as well, we've done the Spine Road and the other bits and pieces. Are we monitoring that as well? Because if the big ones are going down, what's happening to the rest?
I can answer that quite clearly. I was at a Freeport meeting this morning, and the chief executive of Princess Yachts, when asked the same question, gave the answer that the jobs are being wound down due to a reduced order book. And for no other reason, he said.
Any other councillor? No. Thank you very much, councillor. Second report was on special education. I'll ask councillor Lewis Samuel to come to the front with Kelly Knott.
So I will highlight some things that I've got in my report, so hopefully that might answer some of your questions you might already have. So SEND remains a key area of challenge for us as an authority, with demand continuing to rise across the county, country, and national pressures around the system increases. The National Audit Report has highlighted the significant increases in the number of children having SEND, and we do welcome the government's announcement of an additional 1 billion increase in SEND in the autumn budget, and we will await to hear what Devon will be receiving in the next few months. Recent press coverage has given everyone a feel for the nature and scale of challenges being faced around SEND in every local authority, so Devon is not alone. A set in my report, though, you can see that despite considerable ongoing actions, the council is currently facing 14.7 million of additional in-year SEND pressure in month six. It's important to note, though, that much of this additional pressure has arisen from issues outside our agreed safety valve programme. Costs are being driven by a mixture of dealings with our case backlog and ongoing challenges around the availability of affordable places for more complex cases across the area. Within safety valve itself, officers have already achieved around 11 million of the 15 million of efficiencies, and I think we need to congratulate staff for achieving that, all without hitting our offer to our young family, young people and families. Work ongoing to see how much more might be done. Discussions are also ongoing with our Department of Education. Their team has been constructive and understands the pressures that we face. They've also recognised that some of these additional financial pressures are coming from the department themselves, such as slippages and approvals for new schools and their focus on clearing plan backlogs. You might have seen, recently I've sent our new SEND strategy, which centres around four cornerstone principles for our future practice, and we are working with all our partners in delivering this plan. We've been working with schools across Devon and now have the ordinary available inclusive provision toolkit, and we've had over 250 teaching professionals that's been supported through this programme. We're also pleased this, over the last few months, to have been awarded the 8.3 capital funding to introduce an additional 350 further educational placements. Moving the SEND customer service provision from the statutory team has been positive, and calls have been dropped by 21%, and callers who have responded to our survey is noticing a positive change. More widely, work is ongoing around ensuring that system and processes are lean and effective as possible, and audit findings from the summer being acted upon, with teams in place to reinforce approach, and steady progress is being made. Additional resources and leadership capacity has been put into SEND to work on the wider challenges, additional areas of saving and efficiency being considered, and wider discussions ongoing around creating more placements and capacity. I'd like to thank all the staff within the SEND for all their hard work and discussion, dedication this year. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Questions? I've got just barely camera. Okay, it's quite a number, let's get some up. Okay, just barely first.
Thank you very much to the cabinet member for her report, and I'm concerned to note the increase on pressure of 14.7 million pounds for the in-year spend. Is that why the county council's looking to charge an outrageous and quite possibly illegal fine on schools to raise 5 million pounds next year?
Chair, I'll answer that. So Devon is undertaking its regular schools finance consultation, like it does every year, which includes a proposal relating to tackling the high number of permanent exclusions in Devon. Schools are encouraged to provide responses to the consultation so that informed decisions can be taken. Thanks, Chair.
Right, I'll go for councillor Dewhurst, then I'll go for councillor Beadham. Dewhurst.
Thank you, Chair. It's very difficult to hear what you're saying. In fact, it's very difficult to hear what anybody's saying, but there we go. So I've got two questions. EHCP timelines, it's great to see that we've ramped up the number of EHC plans being issued each month. We know from the last audit meeting that there are at least 1,200 families out there whose children, they believe they need an EHCP, and we know that it costs 17,000 pounds on average to produce each EHCP, which by my simple, simple maths, gives a figure of 8.6 million for the rest of this year at that rate of 169 plans a month. Has that 8.6 million been taken into account in our budget, and if so, will that go on top of the not-quite-15 million pounds overspend this service has already got? My other question is regarding the SEND customer service provision, so I'm really pleased that we're freeing up capacity by using the experts on the telephones, but I would like to know if the people who are answering the telephone about SCND are in fact experts in the matter, or at least well-trained, because many years ago, when I was there, there were just ordinary telephone operators answering calls for the MASH and trying to give their own interpretation on MASH details at the front door now, which was really sort of concerning. And when it comes to the feedback survey, the fact that it's improved from two out of five to three out of five, is that based on all the people who are telephoning in to our contact centre, or is that just the people who answer the service? Because my suspicion is that if they don't necessarily hear what they want to hear, the last thing that they want to do is actually sort of press buttons on the phone or whatever to actually do a survey. So if councillor Samuels could answer those, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks for your questions. Regarding the EHCP, so this is the average cost of an EHCP, you've referred to the 17,000. And the cost is determined by assessed needs of children and young people, and the cost of this plan is dependent upon the provision required to meet their needs. The backlog of plans have been forecasted into our financial plans already, so as far as I'm aware, they're part of the safety valve deal already, so that's already factored in. With regards to your customer relations question, not always the staff are able to answer the questions, but they always have specialist staff on, available to answer any questions that they're not sure about. And with regards to the survey, not everyone responds, so that's just capturing the people that have responded.
Thank you. I should, Brazil next, then I'll take Randall Johnson, and then I will take Lea. So you're in Brazil first.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Chair. I have to say, I mean, this is, this is a report that we get to Children's Scrutiny, well, it comes to the budget monitoring at Cabinet, in fact. We don't get as much detail as this at Children's Scrutiny. And just to say to Jess, I mean, we've absolutely no idea where we're making these savings. We don't know how we're going to do it. We're meant to be down to 31 million this year, 15 million the year after, and then zero the year after that. Absolutely no idea how we're going to achieve those savings within a budget that seems to be running out of control. So can I just ask, just a simple one really, how do you square the circle that you're meant to be making all these savings? We've got a massive backlog in EHCPs. They cost 17,000 on average to, well, that's, I'm not sure if that's the cost of the EHCP or when they've actually come up with a plan to actually implement the plan, but whatever it is, it's a huge cost to this council. In order for us to be successful, we need to get rid of that backlog of the EHCPs, and yet in order to do that, we're going to have to spend a lot more money. So how are we going to make the savings that we need to do to adhere to the safety valve plan that is going to stop this council from tipping over the edge?
So there's a lot of work being undertaken with the SEND transformation, so if you're happy, I'll give a response to that question that you've asked. Thank you.
Thought you forgot me again this meeting, Chair. Thank you. Yeah, thank you to the cabinet member for the, for the report. And she's right to mention the staff and the impact that staff are having as, you know, this is a real challenge to, as councillor Brazil's just said. But we seem to be mentioning the staff an awful lot, and I've read this report, and considering we're talking about children with educational needs, I can only find the word child in the whole report, or children once. Once, in this whole report. And I think that's disappointing, and that, to me, doesn't tell us that children are at the centre of our thinking like we claim. I mean, I might be wrong, so don't quote me, I'm tired and it's dark, but I've been going through this a couple of times, and I find the word child or children once. I mean, there's young people a couple of times as well, but child once. 9,700 plans been done, tremendous that we've got those 300 or 400 extra done, brilliant. My maths is 165 million pounds cost to this council per year. I would like to know how much of that, 165 million, has gone to private providers, please? And I would like to know, I mean, obviously it is an education and health plan, how much health contribute to that 165 million, or what is their contribution to make sure that, you know, that the health is also considered? I think that was, that was it. I think, well, I mean, again, about the launch of the SEND strategy, which is wonderful words again, but again, no mention of children or young people in our, in our, launch of our SEND strategy. And- And clearly, there's been an impact to young people as we've tried to, tried to find a way and navigate a way through, through the changes of the system. You know, children have had their plans changed, their provisions changed, school transports changed, suddenly they're not being picked up, they're expected to get somewhere. You know, so I would like to have seen something in this report on the impact, and I don't think we should be shaken away, I mean, it's a reality. We are poorly funded, you know, I don't think we've overspent, we've been punished because we overspent. But the reality is, we've got a need, we've got, it's a duty of this council, if a child has an EHCP, to provide, you know, provide that provision. So I've always felt we're not overspent, we're just trying to meet demand. So I'm just disappointed that there's nothing in here that reflects what the impact might be on, on young people as a result of the, of the challenge. And I don't expect answers to all that, there's quite a bit. I would be more than happy to get a written reply, but I certainly would like to see next time we get a report, the children mentioned.
Thank you, I take your point on that, and I will make sure that next time I'll focus on that. This time, I really felt that we needed to focus on financial and the, yeah, the improvement of the Send process, that's kind of what I focus on, but I take your point there. The other points around the £165 million, that's a finance issue, so not my portfolio, so I'll on that particular point, but I can get a written response on that.
I'm going to order Chair, I mean, surely the children's services know how they're spending their budget and which, who's getting it.
We'll get a breakdown and send that to you. And also with the health, yes, we're working, health is an integral part of our partnership, we are working with health, and they're setting a lot of our boards. Yeah, so I'll get more detail around that, and I can order a response for that as well.
Right. Councillor Randall Johnson, then I'll take councillor Whitten.
Thank you, thank you Chairman. Thank you councillor Samuel for your report. And I want to kind of carry on with the theme that we've, we've had from a couple of previous questioners, councillors. And one of the frustrations I have as Chair of Health and Adult Social Care Scrutiny is my inability to delve into children's areas. I've been on the verge of it and conscious that I didn't want to breach the adult element of my work. So my question to you is in two parts. You mention about partnerships, and I'm specifically thinking about NHS in this particular instance. What is your current approach to partnerships? And how do you expect this to change in future? And what are the plans to ensure that all our partners fund their responsibilities for educational health and care plans? Thank you.
Thank you, I think that follows on from Frank's question. We have, we've got co-production, the new Send strategy with the Parent Care Forums and with our partners. So it reflects the local area's vision and commitments, not just the councils, so we're working with a wide range of partners. And we'll continue to work alongside our schools and our health partners, it's really important that we work with them, and to improve the outcomes and experience for our children and young people with Send.
I know it's a real cheek on my part, Chairman, if I might possibly say that I will offer you support through my committee if there are any areas, and I'm specifically thinking about dentistry, that you might want me to explore further. Thank you. Sorry Chairman for being indulged.
Slightly out of order that one. Councillor Whitten, councillor Leva.
Thank you. Really quick one. Councillor Samuel, in your verbal introduction, you mentioned that one of the pressures on the financial overspend was the amount of work that was going into clearing the EHCP backlog. Can I just have your assurance that parents and families that have been waiting a long time for their children's EHCPs to be provided or assessed will not be kept waiting any longer for financial reasons? Thank you.
We're doing our best to clear the backlog, I know that staff are working at pace, and so that we'll do our best to do that, thank you.
Councillor Leva, then councillor Helia.
Thank you Chair. I started out with a great big list of questions, having read this report, and quite a lot of those have been asked already, but I've still got quite a bunch of questions, but I will try and focus them down a little bit. Just following on from councillor Whitten, I suspect that I, like many other councillors, have parents getting in touch frequently, looking for helping getting EHCP, actually getting them through, dealing with financial assessments, all of that sort of stuff. And I'm frankly at a bit of a loss as to what to say to them, other than you just have to keep going. And that feels a really pathetic response. My question isn't, what would you like me to say? But actually, we, we need to be able to give some reassurance to residents. And I mean, I'm just looking here at section five, section 5.1, particularly about EHCP timeliness. And it talks about, the second paragraph talks about, there's an increase of, increase in requests of 18.42% increase on the year. That's tremendously detailed figure there. But interestingly, the rest of this report seems to lack quite a few figures. So an increase of 18.42% is an increase on what? You know, what, how many requests were there in this last year? Is it, is it changed from last year? Is there a change in a monthly profile? What is going on? And I suppose my final question to you is, I wonder when you provide us with reports again in the future, could you undertake to cover actually quite a lot of the questions that people in this room have asked? And actually provide us with actually more information, rather than just sort of headline good news or there's a bit of a problem? It would be really useful if all of the things that you put down, if you could include questions so that we know what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. So with regards to your first question, parents can access support and advice through the Devon Information and Advice and Support Line, which is Dia Service. I can say that they're an excellent service, so they've got a wealth of information that they can, I can send everyone their website details, that's fine. With regards to your question about the percentage, that is based on last year, so we can get more information for you on that. What's that, the question?
Previous year.
Okay, that's no problem, we can get that.
Profile of what's happened on this.
Yes, I reckon I can get a response for you on that. And I will capture all the questions, and I can assure that we'll get that in the next report. Can I also say that anyone can email me at any time with any questions, I'm quite happy to get some support from officers, just anytime, I'm there, thank you.
I've got so many still wanting to come in, I'm sorry. Councillor Helia. I'll take councillor Justice.
Thank you councillor Samuel for your report. I'm going back to EHCPs, because there has been some improvement. Can you explain the current improvement in progressing plans to required deadline? And how was this improvement achieved?
Yeah, so I've, I've shared a lot of that in my report already, but since May, we've reduced the backlog of overdue assessments by 14%, and the number of overdue reviews by 20%. And we've also doubled the number of plans being issued each month, retrieving the improvements through additional capacity, which has been freed up through service improvements, more capacity from additional agency caseworkers as well. And there's a huge amount of effort over the last six months by officers and partners. So I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Councillor Justice, then I'll go for councillor Hayes.
Yeah, it was identified through the Devon Assurance Partnership and the Audit Committee improvements that were needed in service practice, and why. Could you comment on this good work and the contribution to securing service improvement and constructive engagement? And also, can you explain the practice improvements you expect to see because of this? Particularly, what does the IT system development allow us to do?
So with regards to the IT systems, I'd need to give you a bit of response on that area. But I would like to put my records of thanks actually to the Audit Committee and the DAT for their work. It's been very helpful in highlighting the key areas that need improvement. So yeah, please keep on asking us to come back to the Audit Committee. These include simplifying rationalisation of financial processes, additional assurance around payment processes, and wider work to improve commissioning. Thank you.
Councillor Hayes, and then I'll take councillor Crowe.
Thank you. First of all, communication with families has been one of the biggest concerns for many years, so it's really great to hear that what you've put in place with the customer service provision is actually reducing the number of calls, which means that the stress out there amongst the parents is reducing. Thank you. And therefore, stress reducing on the families. My question again is about EHCPs, or there's parts to it. So the first bit is, has there been a resolution with the DFE over that increased spending needed to reduce the backlog for issuing EHCPs? Will the backlog be completed by March, which is what is hoped from what I read? If I've misread it, apologies. What is the longest time a family is currently waiting for an EHCP? And finally, as you're producing more EHCPs faster, has the quality been maintained or improved? Because even it needed to improve for the EHCPs. Thank you.
Thanks for your questions. So with regards to the DFE, we're in conversation with them, so we're trying to get a resolution on that. With regards to the backlog, we're aiming for March, so that's what the aim is for that to be reduced by. I'm not quite sure on what timings we've got at the minute, so I'll get a response on that question. And yes, I do believe that the EHCPs have been improved. We've had feedback from parents that have said that the whole process and the EHCPs have improved, so that's a positive thing.
Really positive, thank you.
Councillor Crowe.
Thank you Chair, and thank you again, as all the other members have said, councillor Samuel, for the, for the report. The picture I'm getting of the report and of the questions is of a system that is working, albeit it's improving, but it is sort of struggling against the tide. And there's like, well, in fact, there's an additional £14.7 million of high tide actually listed in the report. So my question is drifting away from this report a little bit, in to say, how much effort is being taken into what the drivers of this special educational needs are? I mean, and I mean a completely wide-ranging view of the drivers, there are many, some at the children's level, some at the school level, some at, some at other levels. And the reason I'm saying that is that we've got a school in my division where 58% of pupils have been assessed as special. Now, to me, in that sentence, special is doing a lot of heavy lifting. And I think that there needs to be a look at this, and appreciate we're, we're trapped by legislation in many instances, but the must, how can it be that 14.7% of pupils, whatever it is, each year become in need? Somebody's got to look at this, haven't they? Reassure me that somebody is, thank you.
So you've just highlighted what's going on across the whole of the country. It's a national problem, like I've said at the beginning of the report. So we were at a conference last week, and that's all everyone was talking about, that we need Send needs reform. And so that's what government's looking at. We've heard, things are changing every day, so we heard yesterday about the news of 750 million capital investment coming in to create specialised places in mainstream schools, which again is a positive thing. So the government's looking at the whole system, and that's what we need, we need a whole system change. So we're working with the F40 group, myself and councillor Ledbetter go to that. And at the moment, it's all around Send mainly, and the issues around that. So, you know, we are lobbying our government, our MPs, so that's all we can do and hope that, you know, changes come in.
Councillor Twess, you're last on my list, I see nobody else. I don't think I missed anybody, because an awful lot of people have spoken.
Chairman, thank you very much, and we're very relieved to hear that the questions that we're going to ask are in the main, being asked. But I just want to make a couple of observations. No one in this room should be under any illusion whatsoever that this is all about children, whether you write it in a report or not, no one should be naive enough to think that isn't what it's about, it's about the children. Questions today have been perfectly valid and interesting. I can't help thinking this is the wrong format for, entirely wrong format. This would be much better going to a scrutiny meeting, rather than using up an enormous amount of time here where we haven't got all the answers today, but that's a conversation. As Lois has just said, this is a national picture, you don't have to go too far up the M5 or A35 to find councils in a similar position, if not worse, heading rapidly towards section 114 territory, which I'd like to say we are not. EHCPs, just one final thing, John, I'll be extremely brief, EHCPs, there's, there's a real benefit, bonus, better, in, in having the EHCP backlog reduced, but that's partially responsible for therefore increasing the overspend, because the more EHCPs that are approved and you put into the system, the more the cost goes into the overspend. That's me done, thank you.
I can see a question there, but that's great.
No question, can I thank you very much, councillor Samuel, for being upfront. I'm going to take the next one, which is the Cabinet Member for integrated talks, social care, and then we will have a break. So the more questions you get, the longer it is before we get to the break. How's that? Councillor Bullock.
Thank you and good evening everybody. It's the first time I've sat in front of you, and so, in this role, so I found this year to be extremely interesting and extremely busy. And I've been greatly impressed with the work of the officers in their attempts to improve and deliver the quality of service that we all want in social care. I'm sure that all of our members are extremely experienced and well-versed in what's happening nationally and the local challenges associated with adult social care. And unfortunately, these continue, and from the latest news we have, I don't think it's getting any easier. I've made a practice of circulating monthly updates, so hopefully you're all aware and have full knowledge of the activities that are taking place and the situation that we face. And hopefully that, together with the, the work of the Health and Social Care Scrutiny Committee, has given you the background of the information and kept you fully au fait with the steps we're taking and the positive results that are coming from them. There's one thing I've done over the last months, is made it a practice to go out and visit social workers in the field, visit with them patients in their own house, or clients in their own homes, and experience at first hand the work that our social workers are doing. And we as a council should be extremely proud of our social workers, they're doing a fantastic job in difficult circumstances. We are coming up to Christmas, we will have workers working over Christmas, so again, to those people who will be covering the needs of our residents over that period, I want to extend my personal thanks, and thank you for doing the excellent job that you're doing. My report gives you some detail about the specific areas of concerns or areas that we have, and hopefully the questions that come through from that will... we have, and hopefully the questions that come through from that will highlight the sort of work that we're doing. And it's particularly relevant, given that, as you all know, we'll have the CQC inspection taking place sometime now after the election, we believe. Therefore, it isn't a party political issue, but it's something that I believe that all councillors should be fully au fait with. And that I've asked, well, trained officer briefings for all members through the various groups to get an update on where we are, the action plans that are taking place, and the excellent work our officers are doing to drive our performance figures in the right direction, which we've seen consistently over the last 12 months. So I congratulate our officer team on doing that. I will be happy to take any questions relative to the report. There is one issue in the report where it says I'll give a verbal update, which is relating to the Carers Partnership Steering Group. That group meets regularly. It took place two weeks ago. I chaired that meeting. We should recognise that we've got something like 60,000 people within Devon who carry out caring roles. They're unpaid. Without them, our health service would collapse. Our services would collapse. It's of vital importance that we provide the degree of support to those people that we are trying to do. At my meeting last week, the observations were, one, of appreciation for the work that we're doing. I certainly was able to express my appreciation to the group that look after those people. Devon carers have a register. They currently, a few months ago, had 20,000 of those carers as part of their communication group. That has now grown to almost 30,000. So almost half of the people we have in Devon have got direct access to the support that we're providing. It was also noticeable at the committee meetings, the viewers expressed that we would like, because it's a committee that encompasses all of the services, ourselves, the NHS, various other bodies, charities and what have you, in providing the support to this group. And unfortunately, there are a fair, there are a number of those external groups who are not giving it a high level of priority that we ourselves are giving. So the group has taken on board the action to try and improve that. The other thing that they ask for is that we should all recognise, we put a lot of information out about the services and support we give to various groups, and they'd like some more recognition of these carers with the communications that we put out there. And that information is passed on to the executive, and that is being actioned. So that's good. So, relative to the report you have in front of you, I'm here to suffer your slings and arrows.
Thank you very much. councillor Juhus, you've got your hand up first.
Gosh, sorry, I'll beg your pardon, yes. Thank you very much, councillor Bulliver. That's helpful, and the report is also helpful in the sense that the paragraphs are numbered and the like. Could you tell me how 3.12, the waiting list for those receiving assessment under deprivation of liberty, DOLs, is currently averaging around 3,400 and is increasing year on year? And then how the financial assessments taken by client financial services, which are at a total of 2,730 outstanding, how this is part of an improvement journey, and what you're doing to improve on that? And then could I sneak another, just little one, in around the CQC inspection framework? And the preparation for that by members? And who is actually going to be prepared? And in what way are they going to be prepared? Because to be honest, really, if this council was doing its job properly, those members, particularly the scrutiny committee, ought to be absolutely up and running on everything around CQC. I know it's been talked about for some considerable time. So what additional things are you going to do on that one? And in what way are you going to frame that, please? Because I think that would be of great interest, not just to us, but obviously to CQC, to know what kind of preparations this council is making.
Can I, relative to the CQC? I'm just reminded, we have actually run masterclasses already and invited members to attend those masterclasses. We are circulating more messages, asking that more councillors attend those, so we'll be doing that. What I've arranged is a group leader's discussion with, or arranged a meeting for the officers to talk with all of the group leaders, who will then communicate through to their groups what the detail, and then answer any questions. But that's going to be an officer-led presentation. I think from memories, December the 11th?
I think so.
We'll check that, but there is a date in the diary for that. You also have the questions about deprivation of liberty and what the changes are.
And the financial.
Yeah. It's important that we understand deprivation of liberty is a key focus for the executive, and it's also a key focus for the officers. Over the last few months, or few months, I should say, the situation with deprivation of liberty has been very complicated. There was a legal result came down from the Supreme Court, which increased the number of people qualifying for DOLs assessment substantially. That's gone into the numbers. We've also had the proposed change within the NHS, which is classifying people into a proposed new scheme called the Liberty Protection Safeguards, LPS, which was subsequently withdrawn. That in itself held back application for deprivation of liberty, and then suddenly released all the people that have been held back. It's interesting to note currently, there are something like 160 of these applications coming into our team a week. Now, with all that background, our officers are handling that, delivering an improved service, and they're taking it on their chest. There are areas which it affects, but that's something that we, the officers have a firm grip on and are working on processes to be able to improve it. You ask about the financial question. The, first of all, we know where we are. The medium-term financial plan has one and a half million investment over the next three years, that's four and a half million, and another half million being added to it, making a total of, well, 4.5 million over three years. And that's intended to improve the DOLs service. So we're putting, the officers are putting the money behind it, the council's putting the money behind it. The systems and processes that have been introduced are all there to achieve the input and improvements we want. And I'm delighted to say, over the last months, I've seen, we've all seen that improvement showing itself in the reports we get back.
councillor Brazil.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd like to talk specifically about the partnerships. I mean, I have to say that, and you've noticed, you've listed a couple of the more formal partnerships, the safeguarding adult partnership, the Better Care Fund. What I wanted to talk about was some of the more informal partnerships with many of the volunteer groups. I mean, I think of a couple in my patch, the Food Bank, the Age Concern Hub, the Care Hub. What I find frustrating is that county doesn't seem to engage with them or support them nearly as much as it should, considering the amount of work that they do, that if they didn't do and they weren't there, we would have to pick up the slack. And I've just had a letter today talking about how they provide in the region of a quarter of a million pounds' worth of support, that if they didn't do it, the county would have to do it. And how can we improve these partnerships with these absolutely crucial voluntary sector that we have in our communities?
Yeah, I emphasised the fact earlier that we've got a lot of people out there, 60-odd thousand people working as unpaid carers. Similarly goes with the support services out there, the charities, and the type of people that you want. We're very happy to talk to these people. We will focus on, if anybody needs to get in contact, please do so. We're happy to look at whatever we can. Obviously, there are constraints. We like to fit in with the overall structures that we have and make sure that we're providing the appropriate responses. So please, if there's anybody of that nature, please let them get in touch with me, and I can put them to the appropriate body within the council.
councillor Hall next, and then councillor Lever. councillor Hall.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Bulliver. I think it's relevant, because obviously the leaders' announcement earlier on about budgeting constraints coming forward, which is going to make it incredibly difficult to get a balanced budget. And what I've been a little bit confused and perplexed with, when we're actually looking at the 10-year plan, draft plan coming out from central government, that we're going from hospital to community, analogue to digital, and then sickness to prevention. And I must, through you, Chair, declare my interest as one of Easton Devon Partnership Forum co-chair. And as councillor Brazil was saying, the local care partnerships are part of our solution. If we're unable to strengthen our rural communities, Devon's going to end up being a big, big pickle going forward, no doubt about it. In our partnership forum, we have over 60 stakeholders. We are getting a good traction going forward. We have some really good support from Devon County. We have equally very good support from our district colleagues. The voluntary sector have actually got a breath of fresh air going here. And I can actually only feel at the moment, this is the only mechanisms to empower individuals, households, communities, local councils, all the way through. I'm not asking you to give me any area of answer, but please, can this council, through the health, take this to central government? Because with the greatest respect on a new government, I don't think they actually understand what rural coastal is. I think they're looking at the big population hubs, and we are literally going to be having villages, communities on their knees. We need to be celebrating what's happening in our communities and actually breathing some life into it. I don't think this helps us in any way or form. So please, will you take that message back too? And also, if there is any area with you as our portfolio holder would like to join us on our local care partnerships, we'd be more than happy to see you there.
That's very kind. I take the point you make, and yes, it's a very valid point, and yes, we'll do whatever we can. It's interesting to, I was talking to the people at Public Health. It was interesting to note that the amount of money that we get for public health from the government averages about 67, 37 pounds per resident. If we were to be paid the mean of what they pay for the rest of the country, that would be over 80 pounds per resident. That difference is 40 million pounds. We could have, if we were, if the government was to equalise the structure they receive at public health. Rural communities, I'm afraid, do not appear to be at the top of the government's agenda. And that is something that gives us concern and worry, that they don't recognise the constraints, the difficulties and the problems that we are facing. So yes, I'm very happy to take your point, and we'll move on with that.
councillor Lever, then councillor Hudson.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a couple of questions, and actually just following on from previous speakers, talking about the voluntary and community sector and the contribution that is made to caring for our vulnerable and elderly people, in particular, I mean, across the board. But, you know, we're seeing in this report that there are, you know, and we all know this, that there's more and more people with dementia, more and more people with complex needs, you know, and aging population and people moving to this glorious part of the country. You know, it's fantastic, but it does lead to problems. And so the voluntary sector most certainly has a very important part to play in this. And I suppose I'm just sort of thinking about, you know, sometimes people do think that the voluntary sector just means volunteers. It doesn't. The voluntary sector employs large numbers of people. You know, living options, you know, is a large, very, it's just one tiny example of the voluntary sector that works with this particular group of people all this, across the county. And I'm just looking at the autumn statement part of this report, which is helpfully set out for us here. And thinking about the national insurance increase and the, also the increase in national living wage. Now, I understand that local authorities will be receiving some level of compensation, I hope, complete compensation, for the increases on our expenditure on staff. And actually, shouldn't we expect staff to get paid properly to do pretty tough work, frankly? But there are many organisations that we work in partnership with, and I just would be interested to hear your, you know, what assessment there is of the impact of these increases on the populations that we work with and on the partnership work that is going on, and what the bottom line financially that might be. And I suppose, I mean, again, talking about money, and this goes back up to government a little bit, is that I see at paragraph, yes, paragraph 3.1.14, thinking about the care that is provided for, you know, in our communities, very often by private sector organisations. And it is good to see that there has been an improved capacity in the personal care market, although we, hopefully they're not making profit out of care, including through international recruitment. And I just wondered if you could tell us what your thoughts are and what we can do to address the issues which are being felt by companies and probably ourselves, trying to recruit care workers from across, from overseas, given the last government's legislation and the approach of having 38,000 pounds as a minimum salary for people? I know there are other industries that this is causing significant problems with, and I just wondered how much of a problem it is in this sector. It's alluded to here, but again, it's quite vague in what it says, and I'd be grateful for more detail.
Like you've heard earlier, we have no information yet about what the government actually is going to be doing. So our ability to make a comment really is, we don't know what we're going to be able to do. We don't know the extent to which they'll reimburse us. We don't know the extent they'll uplift the monies that we get to support the, provide the support that's provided in the environment, in the independent sector, to cover their costs. We just don't know. Until we get that information, we are, well, we're lost to explain how we're going to handle it. We're working on it to see what the implications are.
I'm sorry, just, I think we didn't ask that question really clearly. I was thinking about the number of organisations that we have out there in the voluntary sector in particular, that we work with, that we perhaps buy services from, and whether you could quantify.
We do contract with them, again. We don't know if they're going to be included in the government's remuneration. We don't, just don't know. And it's, it would be wrong of me to speculate. So if you don't mind, I'll hang off, give you a proper answer to that until we get some information from the government, if that's okay. You also raised the question, sorry, oh, the international recruitment. We rely strongly, I mean, it's interesting, we look at the statistics, the people that we've brought in that are working for us, extremely good workers, their attendance rate is extremely good, higher than our own people, their absentee is lower, the quality of service they provide is, again, first class. They're also younger, and we have an aging population. It's great to get younger members of our care teams out there, and we benefit even from it. Two years ago, when we all saw this number of immigrants coming into the country legally, 900,000 or just over, 200,000 of those were recruited by the NHS, part of which went through to social care. We did not take 200,000 into Devon, by the way, but we took a share of our people into Devon. That fell to 8,000 the following year, hence the reduction that you saw year on year from 900,000 to just over 700,000. They're a very valuable source. We don't know what the implication, because again, it's a government policy. But all I'd say is they're a great asset to us, they're working extremely well, and we're proud to have them.
And again, sorry, I'm just coming back to this particular thing. It's particularly because of...
Last time.
I was just going to reiterate, it actually says that there's a cause for concern in the report and risks undergoing. You know, it actually identifies that as an issue and I'm just wondering how much of an issue it is as it's identified specifically in the report.
Yeah, we say, at the moment, we're fine, but the risk is. We don't, there's issues the government are addressing, the change, immigration rules, we don't know what they're going to be. Until we see those, what we highlight in the fact, we are reliant on these people, they're great for us, we should appreciate them. But if something happens to stop it, there is a risk.
You're holding people up for tea and coffee. councillor Hodgson.
It's okay, thank you. My question's been covered by councillor Lever. Thank you, so I don't need to ask.
Thank you. I have no other people wishing to speak, so I thank very much cabinet member for his presentation. councillor Bullock, you relax and everybody can have a break now. A piece of cake and possibly tea or coffee or water, I'm not sure what's outside. But you can stretch your leg, but it's going to be ten minutes sharp. Yes, that, we're moving on item thirteen, which is the revised members' complaints process. Because it went through procedures committee, I have to move this recommendation. And I believe it was actually originally agreed by Alan Connick, he moved the procedure. Are you happy, Alan, to second the motion on this? Could you say so please?
I'm very happy to second, Chairman.
Thank you. Right, proposed second, anybody want to raise anything on this? It's been thoroughly through procedures twice and scrutiny, I think. Standards Board, that was it. Anybody else want to raise anything? If not, can I put it straight to the vote? All in favour, please show. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Right, thank you very much indeed. That gets rid of item thirteen. So now we go to item number fourteen, which is committed. If I get to the right sheet, I'll forget there in a second. Come on, turn, turn, turn. Where's it sit? Okay. Minutes are committed. No committee meetings are called for debate. Can I first ask as Chair of Standards Committee, minutes on the fourteenth of October, except minute fifty-nine relating to the revised council's complaint procedure, which has just been dealt with, and the procedures committee of the nineteenth of September and eighteen of November twenty-four, minute seventy-nine in the procedures committee relating to the adoption of a protocol for site visits for the land and property committee requires endorsement by the council today. Therefore, can I take a vote on this matter? The protocol has been endorsed by both the land and property committee and also the procedures committee. I'll formally move that that set of minutes go forward. Can I have a second there? councillor Davis. Anybody want to talk on it? No, thank you very much. Everybody in favour, please show. Thank you. So now we move to the school transport appeal, investment panel, audit committee, held on the thirtieth of September, development management, twenty-third of October, appointments remuneration and chief officer conduct committee, the seventh of November, public rights away, children's scrutiny, health and adults care scrutiny committee, corporate infrastructure committee. Everybody in favour, please show. Thank you. Everything noted. Now we return to the order paper, to consider any minutes called by minutes. This is where I stop. All right, that's what I thought. Now I'm moving to item fifteen, which is notice of motion. Can I start? I have everybody's attention when I state the process, an order of debate that we now follow. Members will note that a slightly revised process was agreed by this council at the AGM on the twenty-fourth of May twenty twenty-four. So I would ask members to listen carefully. I will first ask the mover of the original motion to speak. They will have set up to, they have seven minutes to introduce their motion and also respond to the cabinet recommendation, which has been printed on the, with the agenda for this meeting. The second of the original motion will be asked if they wish to comment, or they can reserve their right to speak later. The leader will then be asked to move the cabinet recommendation and the deputy leader to second. I will then ask the mover of the original motion if they accept the cabinet recommendations. If they do, the accepted wording becomes a substantive motion and the debate will commence with the leader having the right to reply. If they do not, the leader will be asked to speak on and explain the cabinet recommendations. The second will speak at this point or reserve their right to speak later. I will then open debate, inviting all other members to speak. After the debate, I will ask the leader to sum up and the council to vote on the cabinet minutes. If the vote is lost on the cabinet minutes, the original motion becomes open for debate and the usual rules of debate apply. If it is carried, there are two options. The council either votes on the cabinet minute as a substantive motion, or if there is to be an amendment, then it should be submitted at this point. This must be seconded and the second can speak at this point or reserve their right to speak later. A further debate will take place with the mover of, of the further amendment having the right to reply after the debate. A vote will be taken on the amendment. If lost, the motion reverts back to the cabinet minute and further amendments can be submitted. If the vote is carried, that becomes substantive and the cabinet either votes or a further amendment can be submitted. Now for some general reminders. The council must only debate one amendment at any one time. When submitting amendments, they must relate to the motion. It can refer the matter to a committee, leave out words, insert or add others, but must not introduce a substantially new proposal or give effect to the direct opposite of what is the proposal of the original motion. Whilst this may sound complicated, it is very similar to the council's previous process. The difference being that the council hears from the mover of the original motion first rather than last. The council will also ask that the mover specifically, if they accept the cabinet recommendations, so that the council is clear on the view of the mover of the original motion. With these new processes, the Chair will determine how much time will be permitted to debate motions, up to a maximum of two hours. I intend to allow up to two hours for today's meeting. Item fifteen, pension scheme divestment. The council is asked to consider its response to the notice of motion on pension schemes divestment previously referred to in the investment and pension fund committee shown at minute number thirty-eight. Councillor Hodgson, mover of the original motion, will you please address the council covering your original motion and the cabinet's recommendations? And then will your second wish to speak? So it's down to you to speak first.
Thank you Chair. I may just be audacious and just point out, this isn't a cabinet recommendation before us, it's the invention, investment and pension fund committee that have discussed and debated this and brought it forward. And I thank the pension, investment and pension fund committee for their considered debate on both my original motion and the subsequent recommendation presented by the officers to them at last Monday's council committee meeting. I welcome their amended motion before us today, however, I remain concerned that this has not gone far enough to make a real difference. The crisis in Gaza gets worse every day. In the news, we hear almost unbelievable figures detailing the amount of destruction of the Gaza Strip, entire residential areas, key infrastructure, hospitals, access routes, utilities, so much just blown to bits, so much that will cost huge sums to rebuild. Who will be required to pay for the clearance and the rebuild? Are those who have been invested in the destruction likely to be held accountable for this rebuild? What level of complicity do investors in armaments being sold to Israel have in this when it would be clearly doubtful that the excuse that we didn't know the impacts of our investments would be pretty well impossible to substantiate because it is in every news bulletin, every newspaper, day after day, week after week, for over a year now? While the pension and investment fund committee has advised that it is at arms length from the choices about individual investments, because we hand it over to a lot of that decision making, making to Brunel and other professional investment bodies who in turn pool these funds with others, making it more and more difficult to unpick, does this mean that we don't, we just can't do it or we don't want to do it? The committee are also reminded, the committee were also reminded by Brunel and our own internal advisers of the duty is to ensure the best financial return. Does the potential threat that investors, i.e. decision makers about investments, trustees in other words, could be called to account and charged for the disruptive impact of knowingly supporting the sale of arms to a country led by a prime minister who on the back of that investment has currently destroyed over sixty percent of a neighbouring country? Not, not need to have taken that into account? I suggest that the potential impact of some of the decisions on continuing the council and pension fund investments were information of the huge adverse impact they continue to fund, such as fossil fuel companies causing climate change and destruction of wildlife and here today considering the council's pension fund investments in companies that sell armaments to Israel that we know are being used to destroy Palestine, is akin to going forward with our heads in the sand. For me, this is very much more a moral issue because we also, again, through the daily news, the impacts of what armaments being supplied to Israel are doing to the lives of the people in Gaza and other parts of Palestine. The horrific numbers of the people who have been killed and injured in Palestine, women, children, babies, old people and workers bombed, killed and injured and left homeless as they sleep, families left struggling to find their loved ones in the rubble, people who have been displaced time and time again with nowhere safe and nowhere else to go, no hospitals to take the injured, people being starved, denied water and food supplies because Israel won't let the supplies in. Money is fuelling the letting this happen. Whichever way you look at it, a terrible regime is able to do this because it has access to armaments being funded by Devon pension investments and others of course. How is it, how is the public duty of Devon County Council to uphold human rights being confirmed, confined to, confirmed to, when we form to, when we know the involvement of our investments in what many people are calling what is happening in Gaza genocide? How does it feel to know that Devon Pension Fund is making profits on these investments? And it's the United Nations, it's Amnesty International today has joined in, the International Court of Justice are naming this as genocide. Thousands of people across Devon are rising in disgust at these atrocities and many who are members of the pension fund are becoming increasingly upset that their pension funds could be benefiting these atrocities. In September, a rally was held by a difference, by a different solidarity with Gaza groups from across Devon, who came to county hall and brought a public petition calling for this divestment was handing in, handed in with over a thousand signatures. That petition continues to grow and has more has been handed in today and it's more than doubled on the online petition too. I'm aware that the secretary of Devon District National Education Union has written to the committee expressing the views of their Devon Pension Fund members, again calling for divestment of these funds. Tottlerstown Council, who I'm also have a seat on, Dartington Parish Council, they have also passed motions in support of divestment from these armaments companies. There is a groundswell of public support to divest from these companies, supporting such destruction. If we want to stop our part in finance that is fuelling this war in Gaza, we need to support my, what will be my amended motion today, as I will be proposing a further amendment and due course, as and when indicated by the chairman it is appropriate to do so. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. councillor Jen, do you wish to speak at this stage?
No, thank you Chair.
Okay. councillor Morris.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. We had an hour and a half on this topic at our investment committee, a committee that is made up of members from each and every political group, outside individuals, union reps and goodness knows who. And we had a really good debate. As you heard earlier, a member from public was saying that I had met some, a group beforehand a few days before because they wanted to meet and that's exactly what we as elected members should do. So Mr Chairman, we've had a long debate, the result was unanimous, every voting member on that committee voted to approve what is put before you today on paper. I would like to move that motion from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second there councillor Trail possibly here?
Chair, I second the, the motion that we put forward and agree that it was a unanimous decision by that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is open now to councillors. If anybody wishes to speak, councillor Connick.
Thank you Chairman, you happy for me to remain seated near the microphone or?
I think it seems to be better with all of us when we're sitting, so I give dispensation today that we all keep our seats.
Thank you Chairman. I very much welcome the motion from councillor Hodgson, but I especially welcome the commentary from the Chair of the Pension and Investment Fund Committee, what he says about the length of time this was debated and the outcome of that vote. I've also seen the amendment, which I think as Hodgson will propose, which I would support as well. We debated the issues in Gaza, I think, several months ago, maybe a year ago, it seems a long time ago. And we used, I think, careful language because at that time, while some people were describing it as a genocide, there wasn't evidence for it. Matters, I think, as we've all seen on the news, have become inevitably very much worse than we could ever imagined. And I note the UN Special Committee describes Israel, Israel's warfare methods in Gaza as consistent with the characteristics of genocide. And then yesterday Amnesty International reported and saying that it finds sufficient basis to conclude that Israel has committed and is continuing to commit genocide against Palestinians in the occupied Gaza Strip. Based on those independent reports, independent to us, but other people who have been watching and monitoring for a year, I think it's the right thing to do. I thought it was then and I'm glad the Pension Investment Fund Committee have come to that, considered judgment in view now, it's the right thing to do. So I will both support the recommendation from the Pension Fund and if councillor Hodgson moves her amendment with the additional section D, I will support that too. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any other comment? Any other councillor want to talk? If not, I'm going to go straight to the vote. The vote, as I understand it, is the cabinet recommendation or the investment and pensions recommendation. All those in favour, please show.
Can you just confirm to me when I propose the second, the amendment to what's on the table? Because if we vote on this, okay, we vote on this first, is that right? And then I propose the amendment? Thank you. Just didn't want to miss my little slot there, thank you.
All those in favour of the investment and pensions recommendations that have been put before you, please show. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Okay. Now, councillor Hodgson, you have the right to move a different amendment, which I think has been circulated, but it was circulated very early or earlier today at lunchtime-ish. It's to add some words and also virtually a paragraph. Would you explain it first and then talk?
Thank you Chair. So, so the, my proposed amendment is just a little bit extra really, that's slotted in to what you have in front of you. So I won't read it all out, otherwise it would be, we'd be here all day. But pipe B says support the engagement activity. I'd like to add in the word meaningful there because I think it gives it strength. Because otherwise engagement, and I've seen this time and time again with a lot of investment conversations and engagement, the engagement ends up being, it's, it's just, it tends to just be noting, exercise to some extent, but meaningful hopefully puts some wind behind that. but meaningful hopefully puts some wind behind that. And now, after item C, which supports the exclusion from investment portfolios of companies manufacturing controversial weapons, in other words, in brackets, cluster bombs, biological and chemical weapons, anti-personal landmines, I'd like to include a item D, which is support the exclusion from investment portfolios of companies producing armaments that are specifically flagged by the United Nations as supplying a state suspected of carrying out serious human rights violations, war crimes and/or genocide. And then it just carries on as you have for the rest of that Investment and Pension Fund documented motion. I ask for that to be seconded please.
Do you have a second of that? Thank you, mister Gent. Any want to speak on this, I think? Anybody want to speak on this? Okay. I'll go for the bankroll first.
Thank you Chair. Actually, staying in the first part of the vote, because I wanted to hear what the amendment had to say, because my concern and point was about the particular focus on Israel, when we've got people like Saudi Arabia in Yemen, you've got what's happening in Burma with the Corin, you've got what's happening with the Uighur in China. Actually, it needs to be much broader than just the focus on Israel. So that point D that you've inserted actually makes me want to vote for this, because it should be the same across the board for any atrocities that are happening, not just focused on one particular country. So that makes it acceptable to me. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Gent.
Is this my chance to second the amendment? At any rate, I'd like to speak in support. Yes. I don't believe that Devon Pension Scheme members or all residents and people would want to make money out of genocide. And much has been said about the fiduciary duty of the fund, or of the committee who control the fund, to make as much money as possible for the scheme members, and that is correct, but the legal definition of fiduciary duty does include the public interest. And actually, it's practical in terms of the pension scheme, when people are considering, do they want to opt in, do they want to top up their payments, do they want to drop out? If they're embarrassed by the scheme, they're not going to be so keen on the scheme. And I would like everybody to be proud of our pension scheme. And so I think not only the public interest, but also the interest of the members of the scheme is to try and exclude making money out of genocide and other war crimes. So I would support this amendment to widen the exclusion policy of our investments to not only exclude tobacco products and heavily biased towards fossil fuel companies, but also companies that supply countries that have been found to be committing genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak on this, before I call councillor Morris? No, councillor Morris.
Sir, Chairman. Oh, sir, you want me to sit there? Yeah, nothing to say Chairman, apart from the committee, which included councillor Gent, voted unanimously for this.
Are you prepared to accept the amendments?
No.
Yes or no?
No.
No, right, okay, fine. Gives us an answer. Okay, on the basis of that, you've summed up. Vote. Everybody in favour with the Cabinet?
If you vote for genocide, please vote with your hearts, your conscience, your identity.
Sorry. Can I? Nobody's asked to speak. It's been summed up. On the basis of that, I want to take a vote. The vote initially should be on the amendment. The amendment, everybody show.
Chairman, can I ask for a recorded vote please?
You can ask for one. I'll ask councillor, do we want a recorded vote?
Yes.
Sure of hands, yes or no? No. Yes or no? Yes? Those not wanting a recorded vote, please show.
I think we win.
The noes have it. Okay. Let's now move to Jackie Hodgson's amendment. Yes?
May we ask for our votes to be recorded?
You get a piece of paper and you sign it and submit it. Simple as that. There is a form, you will sign and submit. Those in favour of Jackie Hodgson's amendment to the motion, please show. Those against that, please show. The amendment has been defeated, so I make it now the substantive motion. Everybody in favour for that motion, please show. Anybody against that motion? Thank you. Right. I'll now move to the next motion for discussion. The next motion is in the name of councillor Leach. It's a Young Carers Convention. Now, on the basis of that, you've got to know, I haven't got that. Covenant, that's what I said, all right, covenant, not convention. Who is going to move on behalf of councillor Leach? councillor Lever, okay, so you're going to speak.
I wasn't going to speak for very long, because I think actually it's been debated at some length already. And I think it is fairly uncontroversial. I mean, I would recommend that people vote for this. As we've been talking about earlier, the contribution that young carers make to our communities are massive and not as recognised as probably they ought to be. The interruption of people's childhood, you know, we come across carers as young as five and six years old. So actually taking on board this Young Carers Covenant is actually really important. I think the children's, asking the children's scrutiny, committee members to monitor progress against the actions identified by the Young Carers Steering Group is kind of a minimum. But Frank has not asked me to put forward an amendment, so I'm not comfortable doing that at this point. It's something that we will be monitoring and potentially come back to. But at the moment, I think we would accept the Cabinet Minute and recommendation.
On the basis of that, do you have a kind of second? No, we have no amendments, so we don't have to have an amendment. Am I correct on this? We now have the Cabinet Recommendation, which has basically been endorsed. So James.
Chairman, very happy to move the Cabinet Recommendation. And although councillor Leach isn't here, please, could you pass on to him my thanks in actually bringing this forward, because I think it's a very important issue. And I'm pleased that we've come to an accommodation between councillor Leach and the Cabinet Recommendation. So I formally move the recommendation from the Cabinet in front of you.
I'm very happy to second.
Seconded by councillor Davies. So everybody, straight to the vote. Everybody in favour, please show. Thank you. Anybody against? No? Thank you. I now move to the third motion. And that one, I've got to find my papers again. Winning a better devolution deal. Again, submitted by councillor Hodgson, oh no, sorry, councillor Lever, rather overtaken by events from government. Do you want to talk on it now, or do we go to a vote? And I understand you have an amendment you wish to bring later, but deal with what we've got at the moment. Do you want to speak on what you've got now?
I mean, again, this is something we have talked about a lot, and it has been overtaken by events. So I'm not going to say an awful lot about it. So I'd rather speak later, and I do have an amendment, you're absolutely right.
Do you second or want to speak at all at this stage? councillor Connick.
Chairman, I formally second, I reserve an opportunity to speak.
Fine. On the basis of that then, the motion as laid out by Cabinet. Anybody else wish to talk on it? If not, James, will you move it?
Chairman, very happy to move the recommendation, A to D. Events have overtaken it, so it has been written in terms of events overtaking it and also events to happen in the future. And so I'm very content to stick with the Cabinet Recommendation before us.
Thank you, can I have a second there?
Very happy to second.
Thank you. Anybody want to talk on it at this stage? No? Everybody in favour with the Cabinet Recommendation, please show. Thank you. Anybody against, please show? No? Right. That is now the substantive motion. councillor Lever, now you're welcome to move your amendment.
Thank you Chair. I will be as brief as humanly possible, which I'm sure everybody will be grateful for. We have been waiting for the English Devolution White Paper to come out, but it is not yet here, we heard earlier this week, we're hearing before Christmas. But at the moment, we do not have it, so we don't know the detail. There have been quite a lot of nods made to what's going to be coming. And it also includes the idea that there is highly likely to be a mayoral model which continues what the previous government did, which will really be trying to, well, by the sounds of it, reduce the number of people that civil servants and ministers have to talk to. We know what's coming. I think we as a party are really concerned that our focus should be on what is absolutely the best that we can achieve for the people of Devon. Now, whatever the model is, certainly the difficulty with this devolution is that the word devolution, as was brought forward by the previous government, it is about devolving powers from Westminster, but actually the power is being devolved to a smaller number of people to devolve further away from the communities that the decisions will actually impact on. We have some concerns about that, but we have to go with what comes out of government. So the real discussions we've been having is that although there are numbers being bandied around, although there are suggestions that there will be local government reorganisation, which is unsurprising, although there is some mention that there will be financial disbenefits to not having a mayor, we don't know yet. So my amendment is really to seek to further the Cabinet Recommendation, so that we don't just think about looking at Plymouth, but we look at whatever is going to be best for Devon, for the people of Devon, whatever is made possible by the White Paper and what comes after that. So I have forwarded my amendment to Karen. It isn't on the order papers. It is on the order papers, oh great, lovely, thank you very much. So, I mean, really, it's just to keep the door open and keep an open mind as a councillor as to what agreements we may seek in the future, because it would be mad not to.
Do I have to formally propose my amendment? I do formally propose my amendment.
And you have a second there? I have two here, right.
Chairman, I'm happy to second, I agree with everything my leader said.
That's right. On the basis of that, does anybody else want to speak on this motion? councillor Crowe.
Very, very briefly Chair, just to, I know you read out a massive statement at the start, which went on for about five minutes, and I made every effort to listen to that. But it seems to me that we voted on a Cabinet Recommendation, and then we approved that by a considerable majority, and then we say let's take amendments. I thought you couldn't revisit something for six months. I'm not saying I'm against whatever's going on, but something's not right here, is it?
I'll get the county solicitor to answer it for you.
This is our process, it's now within our constitution. It is the new process that we use for discussion of all of motions. And you're quite right, we have voted on the substantive, but this is to vote on the amendment to substantive. The reason that we effectively switch from the old process is so that all of what the original mover wants to make your motions put to all of all members, so that's considered before you make the final decision. And this was something that went at great length for our governance working group, has been through procedures, but this is our process.
Right. Does anybody want to talk on the amendment? Are you summing up? Anybody want to talk on the amendment? If not, James, you sum up, because it's your motion, whether you want to accept the amendment or not.
I'd like to thank councillor Lever very much for her amendment. But I don't really think that it adds anything to something that we haven't even seen as a White Paper. There's lots of speculation. Anyone who's been in meetings with me, with district councils, parish town councils, I've been quite open that we have to look seriously at whatever government comes along with. We can't be narrow and say we won't look at it. That is the position of the administration, it's the position of the Cabinet. So I'm very content with the Cabinet Recommendation as it's set out. I would ask members to support it.
On the basis of that, the Cabinet Recommendation, the motion, is now, everybody in favour?
Do I? Yeah, you've voted on the Cabinet Minute, that's become substantive. You're now voting on your amendment.
That's right. She doesn't get a second bite.
She's already had her.
Chair's discretion, if you want. Yeah, it should be James that has the final say, but at your discretion.
It's your discretion.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm going to take the vote.
Sorry, everyone's getting really confused.
I've operated the way it was laid out at the very beginning, so I'm taking the vote. James has moved the Cabinet Recommendation, which is the main vote.
Yeah. We've had the amendment, you've offered it up for debate, no more wanting to speak, so councillor Lever does have a reply on the amendment, and James should have spoken last as the mover of the substantive motion. It's getting late in the day Chair, everyone's getting tired, I think. Apologies, the Chair opened the floor for debate, nobody else wants to speak, so you have a right of reply, and James should have the last say. So right of reply and then final say on your amendment.
The floor is yours Karen. I asked if anybody else wanted to speak, nobody did, not even you to indicate. So I move to the vote. But you speak first.
Okay, I am really struggling to hear all of this, and it's all the different people talking at the same time, which is really, really hard, but I'm sure we're all suffering from this. I mean, I think for me, it's particularly, the amendment I've put forward is because the D on the Cabinet Recommendation talks specifically about Plymouth. And in my view, it, oh my gosh, in my view, it really limits what we can do, what we should be looking at, and it supports something which may or may not be in line with what comes out. It just feels a little bit narrow-minded, and I think to ask a council to be open-minded about potential future opportunities in the interest of the people of Devon seems to me a reasonable thing to ask, and I would be upset actually. I think if we were as a council, cut our noses off to smite our face, which is what I think a vote against my amendment would represent.
Thank you. Now, I ask councillor James McInnes to sum up.
Thank you councillor Lever for that. Anybody who knows me at all and knows my Cabinet colleagues. Sorry, my mistake. Sorry, I'm so used to standing up, and I don't think when I sit down, as I said earlier. That might be an advantage of course. I thought seriously about your amendment, but at the end of the day, until I see that White Paper, and I'm sure we'll be in this chamber at some point in the future, actually discussing what's in the White Paper when we actually have what the government has in front of us, I'm going to stick with the Cabinet Recommendation. the government has in front of us, I'm going to stick with the cabinet recommendation. Because I've been very open all the way through, that we have to look at whatever government comes up with, and we don't know yet, and nothing has changed since the cabinet made its recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to the vote. Just to look at me first. The vote is on the amendment, my amendment, the cabinet amendment first. Yes. No, sorry. It's the amendment by Caroline Lever, everybody in favour, please show, even I'm getting boxed tonight, it's too late. Right. Those against it, please show. Now that the amendment has been lost, so the original motion that was proposed, the cabinet recommendation, is now, everybody in favour, please show. And anybody against, please show. It's carried. Anybody against? Nope. Abstentions? Nope. That one's put to bed as well, now. Now we've got a change in order for the next three. We have three motions coming to council, one of which councillor McInnes has asked to be debated today about protecting British family farms. Under those circumstances, I've been asked if I could move or bring forward councillor Atkinson's motion on the control of local bus services as item 19 on the agenda, because she's happy for it to go to cabinet. I hope I'm right on that. Councillor Atkinson has gone, by the look of it.
Chair's scrutiny committee, ECC.
Somebody going to move that for her? Okay. Is that agreed by everybody? Please show. Thank you. The next one is councillor Ave. Ave's to move a motion on children's social care policy. Councillor Ave, will you move that, please?
I move the motion, and I'm happy for it to go to whichever you think is appropriate. Is it cabinet at this point? Thank you.
Is that agreed by everybody? Please. Right, thank you all very much, in which case I now back to item 18, which is councillor Samuel's will move the motion protecting British family farms.
Well, there we go. We're not allowed to use council assets for party political views. Obviously, the Liberal Democrat leader was at the rally, so was the Conservative leader. This is, this motion is a party political issue, and yet our PR team, I read in the Timmer Post, wonderful periodical, I read an article that was sent by our press office. Now, I'm predisposed to support this motion, but I do think it is political, and I don't think our press office should be acting. Are we going to be before the beak because of this? Because we've broken, have we potentially broken the law?
I get the county solicitor's, councillors.
No, happy for the motion to be discussed, not breaking the law in discussing this motion.
The council press office, the council's assets in the form of the press office, obviously after we've voted, it will be part of council policy, and so it can be sent as a press release, but a press release was sent saying this motion was going to happen. I don't ever recall any other motion being, you know, fronted by a thing. And as I say, I'm predisposed to support this motion, but I do think that this looks like the press office behaving in a party political way, which is illegal. You cannot use council assets for party political views.
Can I, can I just, we have a county solicitor here. Would you care to interpret the rules?
Thank you, Chairman, yes, we responded in a factual way, we were asked a question by the media, and that media response was replied to in a factual manner, so I'm content with the actions taken so far.
Right, we all will be on, right? Let's get on with it, sorry councillor.
Sorry, Chair, I put my hand up to indicate I wanted to speak at the right time.
No, thank you, Chair, I'd like some legal advice, please. Having publicly registered my vote as lately as yesterday on this issue in the House of Commons, where we are fighting to save family farms, does that make me predisposed on this issue, since I have publicly voted?
It does councillor Wrigley, yes.
Thank you very much, I shall take my leave, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Yarby first, and then councillor Connet.
Thank you, Chairman. For those of us who are engaged in farming, are we permitted to stay?
Sorry? Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. So I have communicated to all members, I think, a couple of times now, the end of last week, till the end of this week, and again today, so I'm just going to reiterate that advice. So my advice is that the general dispensation applies, so that is effectively if any member is a land business property owner or leasing in the administrative county of Devon, unless a matter related directly to their land or business or property, would apply the general dispensation, very similar to the way that we're doing council tax. In addition to that, given that this notice of motion is seeking to make representations to government regarding policy, I am very clear that the council is not making a decision that directly impacts on the financial wellbeing of any farmer or farming or agricultural business. This is a matter for government. So on that basis, I'm giving all members a general dispensation, save for councillor Wrigley, who has already provided his views.
Councillor Connet. Connet, does that answer your question?
I think it was councillor Yarby.
All right. Councillor Whitten, councillor Adams, you want to speak on this now, or do you want to, when we get the debate going?
Sorry?
Do you want to speak now, before I get the debate going on a question, or can I get the debate going?
Sorry, Chair, but I think that a statement from the director of legal services merits some clarification and challenge as to how the circumstances that currently exist in this chamber, where a very high proportion of members present have a direct interest in this matter, compares to the situation that arises when council tax is discussed. With council tax, as we are all aware, we are all affected by that, as is our population, and we reflect that in our debate. This situation, we have a very small percentage of our population which is affected by this. That is not safe, or it's not an issue to be discussed, but whether it is appropriate for it to be discussed here, in this context, when we have an abnormally high proportion of people present who are directly affected, that does not feel like a proper democratic situation. And it does not feel as though it's appropriate to the standards of this council that we are considering a matter in which so many individuals have a direct interest, and do not, it does not reflect our population at large. Could the director comment?
Okay, thank you. County solicitor, have you any comment you want to make, Matt?
Just that my original advice still stands, and that is twofold, on the general dispensation for owning land and property in Devon, and I would follow up on the fact that you are not making a physical decision, it's a decision of government.
Anybody else got any queries? I'm going to make the debate going. Okay. Sorry, yes. Councillor Connet? No, I haven't started the debate yet. Right. Councillor Samuel, you have a resolution, a motion for debate, would you care to put it to this council?
Thank you, Chair. Can I speak on it now, before I move it? Yeah. So changes to agricultural property relief is going to be a devastating blow to British farming as we know it, the effects of which will be felt for generations to come. Currently, agricultural property relief allows working farm businesses to be passed to the next generation of farmers without incurring inheritance tax charges, which they would be unable to pay without selling those businesses. Whether that's large or small family farms, tenant farms, or contracting businesses, almost every business producing food for the nation's tables will be impacted. In particular, APR is an essential relief for farmers who rent land as part of their business model, with 64% of farmland occupied by farmers who rent some of, or all of their land. Farmers have already been battered by loss of direct payments, two years of severe flooding, inflation, and extremely volatile market conditions. The reason why I brought this today is I felt that the majority of all councillors here today support our farming communities, so I'm asking all councillors to stand with British family farms and support a cross-party letter from the group leaders of this council to write to the Chancellor expressing our concerns about the inheritance tax policy on farms over a million pounds. I'm happy to move the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a second for this motion?
Yes, she does, yes.
Thank you, Rufus, I thought that was- Do you wish to speak now, or do you want to speak at the end of the debate? Or reserve your right to reply?
No, I won't reserve it, I'll speak now. This heinous inheritance tax on small farms clearly demonstrates how little this government understands and considers business. And yes, farmers are businesses. They grow food for a living, not a hobby. Food is nationally strategic, without it, in times of war, the nation would starve. Thank you, Chairman.
Now, councillor Connet, councillor Adams, councillor Connet, okay. Connet first.
Thank you, Chairman, I support the motion. It strikes me that farmers of whatever size have lacked friends in government for many years, and the last Conservative government can no longer claim itself to be a friend of the farmers, and I was concerned to learn about the proposals for farmers contained in the recent budget. I'm not a farmer, but I have constituency farm who have been in touch and alerted me to the anxiety they have about the impact of the proposals, just as they did about the proposals that have been created by the last government, about Brexit, for example, the impact that's had on farming now. But we are where we are. If I think there's been a mistake by the government, if it genuinely believes that this policy is right, it's a failure to communicate. I'm not entirely convinced that it will be as bad as some in the farming community are worried about, I'm not convinced about that. But I am convinced that will be many small farmers who will be hurt by this, and in Devon we have many small farmers, and we should celebrate them, we should do what we can to support them. But I don't think that I want to be part of making this a Devon County Council against the new Labour government battle, because I think we should have been also equally arguing with the Conservatives about their farming policies. I do want to make this a battle which is Devon County Council standing up for farmers right across this county, for all the things that are right for them, because their management of our countryside matters, their survival matters to us all. Every farmer needs to know that we stand four square with them. I wish to move an amendment to the motion, Chairman, and I have a paper copy of it. Where I think Devon County Council lacks in the motion that's been put forward to us is failing to acknowledge the importance of its own farm's estate. So I am proposing, I'll just quickly read these out, there are only a few amendments, that the introductory paragraph is amended to read, "This council understands the importance and value of farming to a national economy, and especially the rural landscape of Devon." Council also notes, and there are some other minor amendments in that. I'm suggesting we insert a new paragraph. Devon County Council is proud that it has maintained a county farm's estate of 3,873 hectares, or 9,570 acres, which currently comprises 65 fully equipped residential dairy and mixed livestock farms, categorised into starter and progression units ranging from 37 to 301 acres. The farm's estate aims to provide people with their first opportunity to farm, but with a view that within a reasonable timeframe, they will secure an independent livelihood from agriculture. And then I add, "The government's proposed inheritance tax change is estimated to impact", and it picks up then councillor Samuel's point. And then we add in some additional recommendations. Council therefore resolves to, one, oppose the government's changes to inheritance tax, and then two new bullet points. Council therefore resolves to commit to maintaining the county farm's estate at the current acreage as a minimum, and where possible, Devon County Council will increase the acreage and number of county farms, so offering more people a supportive route into farming and agriculture. If we're going to stand four square with our farmers, let's stand four square with them, Chairman, let's stand up, let's celebrate our county estates, our county farm's estate, and what we are doing for farmers, and let's ask the government to think again on the inheritance tax issue, which is the reason why we've debated it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Connet. Have you got a copy of that to put forward? Thank you. Right, now then. I've lost my speakers from it. Councillor Brazil.
Thank you, Chairman, can I just say, I'm very happy to support this motion. I do think it's important that we show solidarity with our farmers, and the important part that they play in our communities, not just providing food, but also, in many cases, they are the very fabric that holds our communities together. And so anything that appears to attack them, then I think we should try and defend them as much as possible. I understand, I sort of have some sympathy with the government in what they were trying to do, and I think we would all agree that those high-worth individuals that have used the agricultural, buying agricultural land by way of a loophole so as not to pay inheritance tax, I don't think we should support that, not least because it inflates the price of agricultural land, which is not a good thing. And I just think they could have been a lot more nuanced in how they approached this loophole that is there, and they've chosen not to do it in a rather sort of blunt way, and as a result have reached what they have shown, if you don't mind the puns. But anyway, I think, I do worry with this government, I don't, they don't appear to me to be in much of a listening mode, and I fear that this is going to go ahead, whatever happens. And so I wonder if this council might be prepared to offer support and help to our farmers, which would allow them to do the transfer of assets to relatives, direct relatives, beforehand, and if they do it before, seven years before they unfortunately go, then they would be entitled to all the inheritance tax relief anyway. So I put that forward as a possible practical solution, it may be something that the Farms Committee might want to look at. But having said that, I think that, as I say, I represent many, many farmers in my division, and I'm very happy to support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Connet, then I'll take councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with councillor Brazil, bizarrely, and the seven-year rule, I think, is one that could be utilised, however- However, we don't know the day of our demise, and sometimes your time is up before those seven years are, it isn't a solution for all of the problems. My biggest concern for our farmers is they face so many challenges, difficulties, their strategic importance in keeping food on the tables in this country isn't to be underestimated, and the pressures that they face are outworked by the fact that suicide in the farming community is exponentially higher than in many, many other professions across this country. This potentially could be the nail in the coffin for some farms, and I don't wish to be sensationalist, but it's a very real reality out there for our farmers who slug day in, day out for actually very little return. They're asset-rich and cash-poor, I know we hear that, and I don't want it to be a cliche, but it's the truth. You know, they don't have hundreds of thousands of pound to hand, and if you've got an active, working agricultural farm that isn't being used as a dodge for tax inheritance by some big wealthy investor, we should be supporting them as much as we can to enable them to continue. Young people are leaving farming in droves because the return is so poor, so actually we should be supporting them any way we can to stay within farming and keeping it viable. So I'm absolutely one hundred percent behind this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Adams. And then I'll go for councillor Morris. Morris.
Chair, could you just clarify? Are we debating the amendment or the original motion?
We are talking the... Amendment's been moved and was seconded? Okay, moved and seconded, we're talking the amendment.
Well, I don't want to discuss the amendment, I want to discuss the original motion, so can I come in later?
Chairman, if you want to suspend standing orders, we can take it as one debate, and then vote on the amendment, and then vote on the substantive at the end, that would be one solution.
I think this is probably the best bet, because I wasn't expecting such a large amendment coming out. In relative terms, there's a lot of red paint in front of me. Let's have one discussion, on it all. Councillor Adams.
I must admit, I am...
Sorry, I have to get the council to agree standing orders be suspended. Everybody in favour, please show. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Adams, next.
I too am disappointed that, once again, local Conservative councillors are using this county council to politically grandstand on national matters. I remember the... Can I just say, point of order, point of order, I have listened carefully to everyone else.
Everybody else.
I do not expect baying from the left when I speak.
Can I just say, on your behalf, will people please listen? No barricade, I said at the very beginning of this meeting, I wanted people to behave in a respectable manner and treat other councillors accordingly.
Thank you, Chair, most appreciated. I appreciate this is going to have a lot of passions, but I do expect people, as I listen to them, to listen politely, thank you. I do remember the leader of Devon County Council being very strident and squashing such debate when his party was in office, and yet this is the second time a national issue has been brought to our local council meeting. As far as I'm concerned, this motion is not relevant to the business of this council and its strategic objectives. Tenant farmers do not own the land that they have. With the desperate state of public services, especially schools and the NHS, there is no good reason why agricultural services should continue to be untaxed. In fact, the increasing use of wealthy people using the purchase of agricultural land to avoid paying tax needed to be addressed. I think other people in this chamber have said that. This issue has been inflated and fuelled by wealthy farmers who don't want to pay tax, and the details of the support for smaller farmers has been conveniently ignored. This is essentially an argument about fair distribution of pain in an era of hard fiscal choices under the devastation of our economy and the services in fourteen years of Conservative rule. This tax is set at half of what other people would have to pay in similar financial thresholds. Farmers need to get their tax affairs in order and to look at reasonable mitigations that have been left open to them. Farms before nineteen ninety-two, when this tax relief was given to farmers, managed to operate effectively, there's no reason to believe this cannot be the case now. Estates worth up to three million owned by a couple can be inherited tax-free, where inheritance tax is fifty percent less than everyone else has to pay, and they can spread the interest, interest-free, over ten years. Their property can still be passed on in the usual seven-year window. Farmers will benefit from five billion being invested in farming over the next two years from this government, the largest amount ever directed towards sustainable food production in our country's history. I will mention that farmers lost all their EU subsidies after Brexit, and the Bank of England made it clear that Brexit has cost this country financially, including farmers, dearly. Interestingly, farmers weren't marching on Westminster about these issues, and yet when wealthy farmers have their pockets affected, suddenly they're up in arms. This motion is a sweeping statement about lifting the tax on all family farms. I certainly would have more sympathy for a more nuanced approach to the issue. That would have put me in a more difficult position, I would say that. However, the council supporting this motion, it seems, believe that all farmers, all family farmers, should be exempt from this tax, which is wholly unacceptable and unfair in our present budgetary situation caused by the last government. My residents have to pay inheritance tax, why are all farmers exempt? I have not received one email from my residents about this issue, they are far more concerned on the doorstep about how they will get an NHS appointment, the state have supported their children in their schools, send, we've been talking about this today. I would encourage this council to focus on their important work here. Certainly my residents will be far more grateful if our energies were placed on that rather than on councillors' pecuniary interests involved in this motion, which is a national issue and not relevant to our work here. I certainly will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Morris.
Thank you, Chairman.
Then I'll take councillor Brooke.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have to take a couple of issues with what was said earlier. It was highlighted by an earlier speaker that this really only affects a few people, a small amount of people, I think, was the words that the lady used. Can I remind her that we are... No, it wasn't you. Can I remind her that in my ward in Holswoodley, agriculture is the biggest employer and the biggest economic driver? Can I also remind her that in here, in Exeter, the livestock market in Exeter... I sat and listened to you, so perhaps you'd like to do me the pleasure, would you?
Right.
No, that's fair, Chair.
No, come on, James.
That's fair.
Okay, James.
I did sit and listen quietly.
Right.
Exeter livestock market brings in Exeter City Council hundreds of thousands of pounds each and every year, and when you had some people come and spoke to Exeter City Council, half of the councillors in Exeter City Council didn't even know that you had any income from Exeter Market at all, because they admitted it in the debate. To me, ladies and gentlemen, this debate is much bigger than inheritance tax. It is about ensuring that the people that keep our countryside, blue, yellow, green, brown, keep the hedges trimmed, and are the reason why so many people come down here to live and to be on holiday. The people that do that are not government people, they are farmers. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And councillor Brooke, then I'll call councillor McGinnis.
Thank you, Chair, very much indeed. Councillor Connet was right, to some extent, to question the numbers of people that may or may not be involved in or as impacted through this proposed legislation. I think it's fair to say that I don't believe any of them, because they are too wildly apart. What we can assume is that possibly the government doesn't have any bigger crystal balls than the rest of us for working this out, and what drives me to that is that the only sure thing about living is you'll die, the unsure thing is when, so I'm not entirely sure you can actually find that out. What is really interesting about this whole issue, it's not about the numbers, it's not about tradition, and in some respects, it's not necessarily about food production per se, because somebody will pick up and run. But it's about what happens to those farms that have invested very heavily throughout, and in this county, we've got about four thousand, there's forty thousand people employed in agriculture alone in this county, one point two million acres of ground is farmed in some fashion or another, and the average-sized farm is between two hundred and four hundred acres. That would suggest that the calculations probably done by the government may not be correct. But these, many of these farms, which have been in people's families for three to six generations, they've survived a great deal. On those farms, there's sometimes three generations still working, and this is really key, and this is something we have to remember. Three generations working on a holding, essentially in many respects, because the revenue return is not that great, and essentially, farmers can be cheap labour. As you all know, my daytime job is that of a farmer. I've got a hundred and thirty-five acres. Twelve acres of that is woodland, the rest is farmable land. A hundred and thirty-five acres, one could argue, just the land itself is worth one point three million pounds. To me, members, it isn't worth a bean, except for what I can produce from that piece of ground, and that's how most farmers apply themselves. So actually, the return that I get from my farm, which probably would hit ten thousand pounds an acre if it was put on the market, is actually a hundred and eighty to two hundred pounds a year per acre, and that is the return. That's return before expenses. If you look at some of the stats that come out, as in Deffra stats, you'll note that quite a lot of the farms in Devon actually only make one percent. My a hundred and eighty to two hundred pounds an acre is somewhere in the region, one and a half percent return on the capital. Most companies wouldn't even get out of bed for that, and that essentially is what this is about. For all of us farmers, the value of our farms is irrelevant, unless we borrow against it, we choose to sell it, or we die. It's capital-rich, cash-poor, it's the way that it is. What I would say to you all is that for most farmers too, this is not actually a political issue. It's not left or right, it's not green, blue, orange, whatever, it's actually about ensuring the continuance and sustainability of a business that they've built up over a number of years, long years, and I would remind you all that we invest for twenty-five years, unlike most governments that invest for five. I've heard murmurings from the current one, they want to do ten, but we'll see. And when you look at the long-term objectives, that is what it's all about, and if you take my scenario, I started working life at four and a half. At the age of fifteen, and this is replicated throughout the industry on family farms, by the age of fifteen, I was doing more work per year on the farm, as well as school, as most people do in a normal working year today. No complaints, but essentially what I was doing was buying a stake in my farm, free of charge. So I won't be emotional about this, because this is about money, but essentially what the government are proposing to do is destroy businesses in a process which actually isn't about fundraising, because if they wanted to fundraise, they wouldn't have given us ten years to pay it off. It is about something else. I beg you to support the original motion, members, and I thank those for their support. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor McGinnis. I can't see anybody else wanting to speak up. Sorry, sorry. Councillor Bullock, right. McGinnis first.
Thank you. I'm not a farmer. I am an experienced businessman. If I was advising a business on how it best uses its capital, and that capital was returning one and one and a half percent, I'd have difficulty. I'd be advising the people, farmers, to get rid of farming and put solar panels all over their fields to make an income. This policy basically looks at farmers and says, "Great, you have a capital asset, we're going to tax you on it. And by the way, to pay that capital, pay that debt, your earnings for the next fifteen years, a hundred percent of your earnings will be the tax you pay." This on top of, and we've already heard, the employment that this provides with the increase in national insurance and the reduction in the five thousand, or to five thousand pound of NHI, is bringing a significant additional burden on farmers. Farmers who probably have got one of the highest suicide rates of any business because of the pressures that they're under. This policy that's been put forward for them, people who generate the food, the essential food, and look after our countryside in the way that they do, is penal. It's a policy based on the green fields of Notting Hill, it's not based on the green fields of Devon. We should therefore be doing whatever we can to support our farmers, and I think this motion does that, and I'm more than happy to endorse it. Thank you.
Councillor Hayes.
Thank you, and I have heard what everybody's saying. I was brought up in Cornwall, I spent a lot of time on farms, I do understand farming. I joined a group about farming, fishing, and food production, and I've spent a lot of time listening to farmers and listening to all the different ideas over the last three, four years on that particular group. There's been a lot of work done in the background to come up with the ideas that the government have come up with, it hasn't just been done overnight. Small farmers within the group were very, very concerned about the fact that the larger farms get all the benefits and the smaller farms find a much harder time. I do understand, I do know about the suicide rates. I also know that quite a lot of the early-on suicide rates was due to the fertilisers, the pesticides, the organophosphates used for sheep dipping and so forth. There's a great mix of reasons. You could, you know, we could discuss that at length, but it is not a good place to be when farmers get to that point, and shouldn't ever. I do feel though, however, that there are a lot of people who have to sell their homes to pay their inheritance taxes, a lot of people who are not farmers. So it's trying to, it is trying to even it up, and I do feel that the small farmers, from all of the work that I've heard and the people that were involved, do feel this isn't going to impact them. There are lots of people going out and knocking on doors at the moment, and I've heard that knocking on doors in Devon, other people that have been talking to me have said, "They're not bringing this up, they're not saying that they're going to lose their farms, they're not saying this is going to be the big problem that is being portrayed and worried about", which is why councillor Adams said the things in her, in what she was saying, that it's been taken out of proportion, it's been blown up into this really big issue for everybody. We do have a problem in this country where the people with the most money seem to be able to pay the least tax in many ways, and that is what's trying to be evened up. There are various funds that they are putting forward to support the farmers, such as the two hundred and eight million to help with reducing the problems people have with outbreaks of serious diseases and the threat to the farming industry, et cetera, et cetera. It's actually a whole lot of things being put together, supporting farmers, you've mentioned them, the seven years of passing on like anybody else, the ten years in order, they don't have to pay their tax straight away, they've got ten years, and there's all of that being put in place. It's been very, very carefully thought about, particularly by somebody like Daniel Zeichner, who's been working with farmers for, I don't know, twenty-plus, twenty-five years, very knowledgeable person. person. And I've met him quite a few times. I do feel that the Labour government is heading in the right direction, and there may be things that need tweaking and, and changing. I do understand what's being said about Devon attracting tourists and all the rest of it because of its green fields. But the cost of, and it's often brought up here, the cost of land is so much, and we do need new houses. Those bigger farms are impacting the others. The small to medium farms are being impacted by the people at the top whose land is worth a lot. We can't buy the land, developers find it difficult to be able to develop more houses, and that's a huge problem for, for our workers and so forth, care workers and everybody, they can't afford the houses because the cost's too high, because developers have to pay so much for the land. It's a complex thing, it's not a simple thing, and it sounds, the way it's being debated, that it's simple. It's not thought about in a simple way, and there's a lot of thought and a lot of discussion go on behind all of it. So I am in support of what the government are doing. I do understand and I do hear what everybody's saying. But I do, I understand a lot about the farming industry, and the aim is not to hit the small farmers. It is to deal with the inequality of everybody, including all those people that have to sell their homes in order to pay for social care and all the rest of it. It is to do with those that can afford to, to pay the tax to support all of the services that are needed. Thank you.
Thank you, and let you run on. councillor McGuff?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm a Devon County councillor. To me, it's rural part of the country. In my own opinion, it's God's country. I'm absolutely proud to be a Devon man. I fully support every farmer within Devon. They're the prime source of our food, our livelihood, and we need them to live. The uncertainty in the world at the moment, where do we want to get the food from? If these wars continue or escalate, we've got to back British farming so we can live. So why would we penalise these farmers? I'm in construction, I have to pass a comment about house builders not wanting to build. Oh yes, they want to build. It's not expensive to buy land, it's quite reasonable to buy land, because you all do viability tests when you come to planning stage anyway, where it's played a little violin, they don't want to pay too much for it. So what the developers do, they build, they landblock. They're not going to release 500 houses at a time to the community, because you wouldn't get the value of houses. So they landblock, the big developers landblocking. Back to the farming, 100% back British farming. Back our farmers.
Thank you, councillor Cox?
Uh, I think I've got two farms in my division. It's not a matter of whether there's lots of farmers, it's a matter of fairness, and it's unfair. And I do appreciate what councillor Julian Brazil said about rich landowners hiding under this scheme, but it's going to hit a, a load of family farms, and it's going to destroy them, and they've been described as businesses. I think it's a vocation. I know the farmer, farmer at Warham Farm, where, in fact, local Conservative, were going to compulsory purchase some of his land to provide a, a countryside park so that the developer can make a big fortune on his housing benefit. Fortunately, that, and thanks to Martin Ridley, that was defeated. So farmers, it is, it is a vocation, it's not just a job. And we need to support all the farmers. But I do accept that some people are hiding behind these people. But in fairness, Jeremy Clarkson did say, hit me, don't hit the people around me. And that's, I think, a fair point. We need to find a different tax system and not hit the family farm, farmers. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. councillor Randall Johnson, then, Wilton Love?
Thank you very much, Chairman. This is a really interesting debate, and I'm finding it good that everyone wants to have a word to talk about the county. What really worries me about the Labour government is that I believe that the Secretary of State for Defra, Steve Reid, didn't know about this until the night before, the budget that was given by the Chancellor, which I find very odd, slightly at odds with some of the comments that have already been made about being well-prepared. There is also a discrepancy, I believe, between the Treasury's figures and also Defra's figures about the values and numbers of people who are going to be involved. It is likely that they will raise about £500 million a year on this, yet the Labour government chooses to give away in grant form to foreign farmers in Asia, in Africa, and in South Africa, in South America, £500 million, the same equivalent. I thought charity started at home. I fully understand the argument that people are making about fairness. Now, if you want to bring in this inheritance tax change, then why are you bringing it in for April next year? Why not do like George Osborne did and give it at least 18 months before you want to bring it in? Why the rush? What's it all about? And that's what worries me about an ulterior motive that's being played behind the scenes. It does act, and when it was talked about in the early stages, I was actually very worried that we might have a situation like Gordon Brown did when he was Chancellor, which was to increase the air passenger duty in the March budget and backdate it to November in the previous year. And so thankfully, at least it's a forward-looking introduction. We have sadly nobody in our budget, in our cabinet in Westminster who has ever run a business. And that is what is crippling us, I think, with the national insurance contributions of 3%. We haven't seen the unintended consequences of that one hit, and it is going to be devastating here in Devon, because our GP, our GP surgeries, our pharmacies, I think possibly even our acute hospitals will be hit. It might only be the doctors and the nurses who don't have to pay it, but I feel that everybody else might well end up having to do it. And our treasurer knows only too well, along with the senior management team of this organisation, the impact that this increase is having on us. I am seriously worried about the impact for the county of Devon. I'm amazingly fortunate in Broadcote's division to have some of the best farming land there is, and some of the highest performing beef-raising farms. And I don't want to see that devastated. My solution to the government is to talk about creating legacy farms, so those that have been handed down from generation to generation should remain exempt. But everybody else, or if you sell your farm, that legacy disappears. It's a simple solution. We are not talking about a lot of money, although 500 million is a lot of money, but it's relatively small. And I just wish that they would just review it and think again. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Wilton Love, and I think then I see nobody else.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, councillor Ashfordson and councillor Yapsin. Wilton Love first.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just something that was said that was quite troubling to me, and quite relevant to my division. Now, my division has quite a bit of farmland, and we've had a problem with, as farming has become less viable, with it being sold off for development, and it's changed the very nature of some of the places that I look after. And I could name Parkham as a prime example of somewhere that farmland has been sold to developers, and it's just been built and built and built and built. And I feel very sorry for the people of Parkham, because it's changed the very nature of where they live. With the changes in national housebuilding policy and the lessening of viability of farming, it, it's, one of the things that concerns me the most is much more overdevelopment, and people are going to lose the nature of what makes where they live what they live. And to me, this motion and this whole policy is completely unacceptable, and I'll be supporting this motion 100%.
Thank you. councillor Ashfordson?
Thank you, Chair. I won't be supporting this motion, and I'm, I'm finding it quite difficult today, sitting here and being told that we're not doing this, because we, we as a group are not doing this. This is a national policy, not a local policy. And also, I take on bridge at being told constantly that this is aimed at small farms, because it's not aimed at small farms, it's aimed at the bigger farms that eat up the small family farms, which are the ones that we want to support. I don't know if anyone's noticed recently, but if you happen to go out and about to pubs and restaurants, most of them now are going towards supporting local businesses, which obviously includes farms. One of the most trendy, I suppose you could call it, things is to support local businesses and source your food and products locally. So that means that we are coming to a point where we're supporting our local farms, not supporting imports from New Zealand lamb, for example, which is just ridiculous. And I think that is what we are trying to, that is what the government is trying to help. The small farms, the small, that we're calling small businesses, not the big farms, and definitely not importing from abroad, but supporting the people in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Yapsin.
Thank you, Chair. I'm supposed to sit down, I will sit down. I'm not sure I can add too much to this debate, it's been really useful, very interesting. Thank you councillor Conant for thinking of the farms estate. Absolutely, you're right, but we, the farm estate also provides far more than just farming to this council, we mustn't forget that. Chairman, we, we, what hasn't been mentioned is the impact on farming that businesses in this country have. Land is of short, in short supply, and it's of great value and continues to rise because of that demand. Pension funds buying it up, big businesses buying it up for investment to put money somewhere safe, and that makes it very expensive for farmers to get hold of land, even to rent. Rents are rising as well, making it difficult. Our, our tenant farmers are struggling at this time. You said nuance, not nuance, I think it was you, I believe, councillor Conant. This is not nuanced enough, someone else said it as well, this is not a nuanced enough approach to ensure that our, our family farms, thank you, yeah, you would be, family farms are less impacted than the, than the industrial businesses that, that push land price up, including house building. So that the, the, the house building targets for North Devon have been doubled, we didn't manage to provide them before, but that will mean more land being taken through the planning process to provide sites to maintain land availability. That puts pressure on agriculture. Small farms, the family farm, their, their resources required, or their, their, their capital needed to provide what they do. It's not a million, it's probably nearer 10, just in terms of assets required. So they really do get caught, and at 1.5% return, that is a huge amount of money. If we can't pass it on through our families, it will be lost to the nation, broken up or sucked up by big farming businesses. And nature, nature recovery, we haven't mentioned nature recovery. The big aggressive commercial farming businesses are less interested in, in, in the schemes that are there. We're on the Elms scheme, we're pilot, pilot farmers, only 120 acres, a bit like my friend here, but I've got wet ground, he's got dry ground, and I do fishing and other things, and a few sheep. So I'm not a proper farmer, I'm just a hobby farmer, really. It's taken me 45 years and my wife to achieve the 120 acres that we farm. We farm a bit more, it's rented. We recently bought 40 acres, nine wet ground, Rushe wet ground, Jerry, nine grand an acre. I had to sell on half so as I could keep it, but I've got a mortgage now, in my son's name, of, of 250,000 on, for 25 years. That's just to keep it in the family. It was my father-in-law's, but he sold it off, we've managed to buy some of it back. So this, this change will make it much more difficult for us to pass that on to our, our son, to allow him to continue. It doesn't make me a living. I've been paying into my farming for the last 40 years from working outside, and it's quite interesting, coming to retirement, and I've got to make it pay now because I haven't got money to put into it. It's quite, it's very, very complex, you're absolutely right. There's so much money from other areas that are, that is involved, and I think you need a much stronger nuance approach to try and catch the, the wealthy. That money's already gone, it was gone two years ago, because they can afford to get it out of the way. You won't catch them, but you will hit everyone else. It's interesting, and Chairman, that's enough, I think, I shall be supporting the motion. Thank you.
And I thank you very much. I'm not going to take any more speeches apart from summing up, other than I want the leader of the council to speak first, because he hasn't had a chance, but the summing up will be done by Lewis and Alan Connick.
Well, I, I won't take too much, Chairman, because I want to leave Lois Samuel to sum up her. But it's really been interesting to hear this debate, and I really do have to disagree respectfully with my Labour colleagues when they say we shouldn't be debating this today because it's a national issue. In Devon, we probably have the highest concentration of family farms than anywhere in England. They're the backbone of our rural community. So that's a good percentage of the county councillors in this chamber represent rural areas. So I really thank, especially some of the farming members, I haven't been a farmer for 23 years, and I have no land, so I have no interest in that sense at all. But I have a great interest in the vibrancy of my rural community. And you can't separate farming from the rural community, it's absolutely at the cornerstone of it. And could I say as well that I think this government has come in, and we had the winter fuel allowance at which we debated at the last full council, and that was a blunt instrument, whereas the government could have come up with a bit more of a nuance in terms of getting some people not to have winter fuel allowance, but understanding that it wasn't strictly within national guidance in terms of pension credit, et cetera. They didn't do that. And they've done this again with agriculture, in that the perception clearly is, listening today...
Point of order, winter fuel allowance is not relevant to this. And there is a support, winter fuel, a point of order...
What order?
Which number? I don't know, but the winter, winter fuel allowance...
County solicitor, is this a point of order?
I'm trying to make an...
Hang on, hang on, councillor, is this a point of order?
No, sorry, I missed the succinct point that came out, thought you were just closing.
I haven't been able to make my point, because I've been stopped.
Comment was made about the winter fuel allowance as being a blunt instrument now, as far as I'm concerned.
No, I'm, I'm afraid, continue.
My, my point was that the winter fuel allowance was a blunt instrument that actually took money away from a large number of people. And this is a blunt instrument that's actually affecting family farms. And when the, when the government actually says it doesn't think it affects family farms is because, we've clear from the debate today, I think to the government, family farms are 50 acres, that sort of thing, but in reality, a family farm to actually be viable, you know, is 250, 300 acres. So it is going to affect those family businesses. So I'm very content to support. councillor Lois Samuels?
Thank you. Now, can I take some advice? Do we sum up with the council, or do we sum up with the amendment first? I think it's the amendment first. Yes, Alan, you sum up, and then I'll get Lois to sum up the...
You started the clock too early. Thank you, Chairman. It's been a really interesting debate, and I would just say to colleagues who've bandied various government policies around, if you say why so quick next April, the Conservatives need only to remember 1995 and the pension legislation which created the WASPY women. Pension change is too quick, that affected millions of women for millions of pounds. Councillor Av says in her commentary about families losing homes, yeah, that's true. Councillor Av says in her commentary about families losing homes, yeah, that's true, and isn't it an equality we've railed against, that if I was diagnosed with terminal cancer, I'd keep my house, I can pass it on, but if I was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, the state will inevitably take my home. The outcome for me is still the same, it's death. But the outcome for my family and for what I've worked for is different. I am sure that the government intended to deal with those particularly wealthy individuals who've gone into farming in order to hide the money and to avoid, not evade, to avoid inheritance tax. I can't believe that they really intended to hit the small farmer, who are the backbone of Devon, the backbone of Britain. But inevitably, as we've seen with many government policies, Conservative, Labour, Liberal Democrat, we have the law of unintended consequence, and I genuinely believe that that is the case here. I genuinely believe that those who have devised the policy announced in the budget have not thought through the consequences, and I am particularly compelled by what councillor Yersey said about his own experience. And I have to tell you, colleagues, reading the commentary from councillor Shalil Kotl Hunkin at Torridge, a small farmer, a small family farmer, generally worried about what the future means for the family farmer, for her children, we should all be concerned about these things. Here in Devon, my amendment is not to upset or to derail the Conservative motion, which I support, but to add to it by shoring up our own commitment to the Devon County Farms Estate, which does excellent work, it provides an entry level and moving on stage for farmers, and we should be very proud of that. It seems to me that we can't speak up for farmers in terms of the debate about inheritance tax unless we also acknowledge and put forward and promote the work that this council has done over many years to build and maintain the Farms Estate. Conservative colleagues have not indicated whether they will accept the motion, the amendment, I hope they will, because it strengthens it. And when we write to government to say, as I'm sure we will with the numbers in the room, to say we think you should think again, we need also then to say, as a county council, not only do we ask this of you, but we stand four square with our, our farmers, as we have done for generations, and we will continue to do so. Support the amendment, and I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alan. Lewis, Lewis Samuel, you're the last speaker.
Thank you, Chair. It's been a really, really interesting debate, and I appreciate people's comments today. And I've been on the Farming Estate Committee, and I do agree, you know, that it's a great way that we can introduce people into farming that can't, that have not been able to get into farming in their own business, family businesses. So on that, that I will agree, the amendment, Chair. Thank you.
Can you hear that?
So I'm adding, I'm adding, I'm accepting it.
Accepting the amendment.
And adding it to the amendment, yeah. Taking it on board, Chair.
Add the amendment to your motion.
Yeah.
Okay. On the basis of that, would you formally move, I think, your ma, now, wait a minute, what do we do now?
Yeah, if councillor Samuel is happy to accept the amendment, it's just a single vote on the amendment.
Two minutes, possibly, and councillor Connick, seconds?
No, it doesn't need to be, no, they've said they're going to accept it, so it's just assumed into the motion, it's fine.
Do I need to reinstate standing orders, be honest?
No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
We don't for the budget meeting, we suspend standing orders and...
We are, we are, let's have the vote.
What are we, what are we voting on? Sorry.
Right, councillor, Lois Samuel has accepted councillor Connick's amendments to her motion. So those in favour, please show. Those against, please show. Those abstaining, please show. That is a unanimous vote in favour. Can I thank you all very much indeed, for a long day. I wish you all a happy Christmas, and I would suggest that you drive carefully tonight, because the weather is not good and the raining is quite hard. Thank you all very much for today's meeting.